You know what, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna leave me a part of the staff and then I'm gonna talk to you to please explain. So that's not.
We're upstairs, we're upstairs, right?
Cause you understand that. I'm going to ask everybody.
Say something really quick. Say something really quick. Really, really quickly.
Okay. Um, where's Mary? I will turn over the thing to you when it's your, your section, I will just turn it over to you.
Okay.
Well.
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Alright. And Denise, okay. You two come over. Okay, it is 2:02, do we have microphones hot or?
You're good.
We're good for recording?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, good afternoon, everybody, the room is full. I'm glad to see everyone here. And let me just make one statement, I was thinking as I was riding down the road. There has been a lot of discussion and frenzy about what this meeting is about. And let me put you at ease, this meeting is a workshop. We have three types of meetings, in case you're not, don't understand that. One is an action meeting where we vote on things and make those final decisions. And those, the other meetings are workshops and briefings. Briefings are so that we can hear from staff and community and people about issues and things that are going to be coming up in the future, when we can ask questions. Workshops, the purpose of a workshop is that we, because of sunshine law, I can't say, Chris, what you think about what we talked about the other day? I can't do that. So in order for me to find out how Chris feels, we have a workshop. And I will say, Chris, what do you think about, you know, our norms? And we will discuss that. Today is not a voting meeting. None of us have a hand grenade in our purse, I don't think. If anybody does, please remove it. But this is to discuss, to talk about facts, to talk about directions, and to look at who we are, where we are going, and the things that we need to do to do best for children. I would like to remind all of my fellow board members, that if you think in your mind of a wheel, and the center spoke of that wheel, is children. If there's anything that you're going to discuss today, I would like for you to, number one, think about how is that going to affect children? And number two, am I saying it in the most appropriate way if a child was sitting here listening and watching my behavior? So we, all in agreement? And before we begin our topics, I would like, uh, 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 let's see, there's Cindy or Denise, if you want to go ahead and explain about our norms and about the accreditation piece and how it fits with this.
Good afternoon, board members, and Dr. Atkins and Mr. Ford. Glad to have all of you here today. So at our last meeting, we had discussed having norms as we had our discussions, and so all we did was just lift them from the last meeting. And so we had agreed last time to be actively engaged, remain on topic, respect ideas of others, speak one at a time, because I think the concern was making sure everybody had an opportunity to be heard. And so as facilitators, when it's our time, we'll call on you as we see your hand go up or you signal. And if it's in the interim and other parts, Mrs. Gettens will be doing that. And then begin and end the meeting on time. We want to be really receptive of everybody's time and make sure that we're carrying to time limits. If by chance we do need to move something to the bin, we can talk about that, and then we can arrange a time for that to be discussed at a future workshop if that's the board's desire. That's what we wanted to make sure we shared. The other component that gets asked for me to talk about is as we approach the eve of accreditation, accreditation is coming up in early February, February 10th is when the site team will arrive here on campus on site. We are preparing busily, we know we have an upcoming workshop relative to accreditation, where our board will be working together at the foundation office and talking about our responses and our potential evidence of the progress we've made for accreditation. I did want to just give a couple of reminders, our protocol, Cindy and I will be facilitating your conversation today, our protocol came out of accreditation. That was one of the required actions relative, or excuse me, that was our response to one of the required actions. And so we will continue to tweak that because that's an ongoing living, breathing document. So that's why we're talking about protocols today. We also wanted to make sure that everybody remembered, and some of our newer board members, I've had the pleasure of meeting with you and talking with you about the exit report for accreditation. There were five required actions, one of the others had to do with the role of the superintendent and the board, and so we had a, we've been able to talk about that. So I just wanted to remind you about that today. And then the third opportunity was relative to accreditation was the idea of self-evaluation. When we looked at the required actions, we did respond that we would, as a board, continue to self-evaluate. And so that's where the self-evaluation came in. We did make a decision after the reorganization workshop to move that a couple of months back because we had new members. We want to make sure everybody had a chance to work together and have something to bring to that conversation. So that was part of it. And then also, plus delta, that was something that was talked about as almost a formative assessment. You know, as we go through our work together, it gives us an opportunity to say, how are we doing? What can we do better? How can we improve? And then leading up to that summative assessment of formal evaluation, self-evaluation. So just wanted to give that little commercial about accreditation, it's coming up, we're excited. Cindy's done a lot of work in the interim, we've been working with staff, and I want to tell you that we are ready. We are ready from the staff's point of view, and I know you're ready as a board. So we'll talk more about accreditation on the 23rd, but just wanted to put in that commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our agenda, as originally stated, had a, an action meeting following this meeting at four o'clock. In consultation with the superintendent and a few others, we decided to cancel that meeting because one of the items, we would not be able to move forward with anyway, the single item that was on there. So it did not make sense to have that action meeting just for something we couldn't do. I've heard all kinds of reasons as to why it was canceled. Dr. Atkins did not just cancel it on his own, we discussed it, and we decided that that's best. We have, air quality is going to be discussed today, some protocol issues, some board advisory committee issues, and an oversight discussion. I would like to ask consensus from the group to move the air quality piece to the beginning so we can do that and then move on to the protocols. Is everyone understanding what I'm saying with that? So can we do a up-down sideways to move air quality to the beginning? Thumbs up or down? Okay, consensus. So Dr. Atkins, can you have the staff member, whoever, if you're, who's ever doing air quality?
Greg Blerton, Susan Millay, Frederick Ross, come on up.
Good afternoon.
Oh, I gotta move.
Do you want to come over here, Chris?
Thank you.
I'm not advertising for my team.
Yes, you are. Every, every meeting.
It was under the table.
Every board meeting.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Greg Blerton, and to my left is Susan Millay, our executive director of financial services, and Frederick Ross, the director of procurement services. And at our board action meeting last week, we had talked about a bid agenda item coming forward for indoor air quality services, and there's a number of, variety of services within that bid, respective to the vendors that we were recommending approval to award that bid to. And from that, it was an opportunity to discuss what these services are, the history and the background of this bid over the past number of years, what is involved with indoor air quality, so that you have all of the information necessary to then act and, and vote on this agenda item when it comes forward at a to-be-determined board action date. So Susan and Frederick have the presentation that they'll step through, we have how the presentation will go, and they'll do most of the talking, then obviously we are here to answer questions that you may have, again, about the history, the background, and then the bid itself going forward. So, does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Can I get a thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Alright, so.
Okay, so access to the presentation?
Yes, so the presentation is in the...
Do you have, I can pour like wine.
Yes, yes, yes.
So you missed out me back this morning, I could hope it, I know it's been a while since I graduated from here. They asked a couple of questions, because you have a whole board. And I said, oh, I raised my hand, because I'm sure that you're always from the board. Awesome. Alright, thank you, everybody. Good afternoon, thank you for inviting us to share some information with you about indoor air quality services. Sorry for that little delay, we're usually in the boardroom and different setups, so. Alright. So the questions that we had heard that may be of interest to respond to are the driving needs for indoor air quality services. What has been historically purchased and at what cost when we've had an indoor air quality contract in place? How are these services procured? And what questions have already been addressed regarding this contract? And any questions that you may have, so we can have open dialogue about, if we didn't get it quite right, that we can address any other questions you may have. So the drivers for the need of, for indoor air quality services are to maintain our safe and healthy environment in district facilities, providing a safe learning environment for our students and a working environment for our staff. We need to, of course, protect district assets, and we must comply with the laws that say, in Florida, there is a requirement to protect our public facilities and make sure that our children are in a safe environment, and so these services are procured to comply with the law. Additional drivers, we have over thirteen million square feet of facilities that we manage, and forty-three of our campuses are aged between forty-two and a hundred and three years. Combine that with the southwest Florida environment with high humidity and wash, water levels, moisture levels, you can just know, I'm sure at your homes, the moisture in your home, the opportunity for growth, and that is just one of the few problems that we encounter under this contract for services. Water penetration is a large driver, but not the only one. Also, for the past ten years, we have received less and less funds for capital projects, including re-roofs and maintaining our air chillers. And you know that we've been expanding and extending the life of our chillers and other things, instead of ten years, trying to get them to go twelve, thirteen years, et cetera. And so those are older, that results in older equipment that needs further maintenance, cleaning, et cetera. So there is a continuing need for IAQ services. I researched back to, I think, the nineties is when I stopped looking, our files that go back and back and back, how long have we procured these services? I did not find any gap year where there was not an IAQ contract in place for services in our school district. So there is a driving continued need due to environmental conditions and for the safety of our students to have these services in place. And the procurement best practice for procuring services is to have pre-negotiated contracts, vendors, and rates in, in place in advance of the need for service. So that is really the driver for that, and many of our other contracts is following best practices. What kind of services have been and will be provided? So our two most recent contracts span back to 2010, and the services that have been provided include that list of items that you see, and I, I will share that sometimes new things comes up, such as bat infestations or bedbugs in, in our current contract. I don't think we ever had that before, but things come and go, the types of environmental considerations that are presented in our schools. And so these contracts are staffed by, or are supported by vendors who have qualifications, certifications that are legislatively mandated and monitored and specified what it is we need to procure if we're going to have somebody treat our facilities. Many of those treatments require very specific licensers, licensors which are monitored by the state. Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
How many of these similar licenses are held in-house in our maintenance department?
I know that multiple staff have some of the licenses related to mold remediation and mold supervision.
Can you be specific?
I can, we can obtain that information for you. Maintenance is not one of the departments that I manage, so I don't assign and hire the staff in there.
We can get that for you.
I'm sorry, I was under the impression that we were going to have some representatives here from the maintenance department to answer those questions, since they are the ones that do the assignments when some of these needs occur, that they're the ones that actually evaluate and decide that it should be one of our companies putting stone and sod on our fields instead of our own landscaping people. So I was really anxious to hear the answer to that.
We do have maintenance staff here, so we can ask one of them to come up and answer the licenser question.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll refer that to Mr. Flock.
That'd be great.
Mr. Thompson, here's the supervisor of IAQ, he's a go-forsome licensing agent. Oh, you're gonna have to get a list of the rest of the licenses and reports.
I'm licensed with the state of Florida as a licensed Florida mold assessor, and I'm also licensed with the state of Florida as a asbestos abatement contractor. Those are the two licenses that I think come into play that you're asking about.
And none of the staff of the maintenance department, the different workers that you have, hold these?
No.
So you're the only one, and it's mold and?
I'm a licensed mold assessor, and a University of Florida asbestos abatement contractor.
Okay, so let me just ask, you, you hold the license as the assessor, are any of your staff trained though to do?
No ma'am, none of their staff is trained as a licensed remediator.
Okay, that's what I was...
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, are you licensed, who's licensed for the lead abatement, or lead assessment?
We subcontract that out, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And to whom?
What's that, any of the contractors that are on that bid at the time?
Okay.
As I've been the supervisor of the indoor quality department, we have not had any lead issues come up. The last lead abatement that I can recall was Tropic Isles Elementary, and it was, it was an eve way that needed to be abated. That's the last one that I can recall. We've had some, some questioning and some requests to test the water at G Weaver Hips, and I tested that for a parent that was concerned about that, as well as Alba Elementary. Those were the two last ones that I can recall. For water, that was lead in the water, not a lead abatement.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I know that you have a lot of skilled maintenance workers. Are there some that might be eligible to gain these licenses? And if they did gain these licenses, might it not save the district some, some money so that we could possibly reduce the amount of the contract that we do with these other companies?
Yes, ma'am, I could do something to do this. I believe we could, yes, ma'am. As of right now, we don't have any available positions that I'm aware of.
I'm talking about people that are working there right now.
That would be working outside their job, ma'am, according to their spout positions. If you guys were willing to address that with spout, I'm sure that we could, yes, ma'am. Whatever, yes, ma'am.
So I have another question. Radon is, is, are any of these radon certified? Because that's a whole nother special thing, that's something that's come up recently.
Yes, ma'am, it has come up recently. We're in a portion of the state that, that we're not mandated to do radon testing, and that, according to the Florida state statute, it's kind of a weird area, Gray, and I apologize for not having the correct answer, but radon is mandated in all commercial buildings and schools throughout the state of Florida. We're, we've been in an area that has not been mandated to perform radon testing. One governing body says we are, one governing body says we're not. We're gonna be mandated to, to test for radon eventually. AMRC, I believe, has the proper licensing to test for radon, and we will, that will be coming in the near future. And you have to test one hundred percent of the first floor, twenty percent of the second floor, and ten percent of the third floor, and then the follow-up has to be there, you know, so on and so forth after.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
And Ms. Vaughn, I'll speak to the licenser and the certification of our employees. That's always the, you know, one of the things that we have to analyze for any type of services, whether it's, you know, within maintenance or facilities, when we're building schools, and if you can think of a variety of the services that we contract out, is, is it more cost-effective for us to hire our own and certify our own and, and take those recurring fees and charges to continue that certification, or hire people that that's what they do all the time? And it, where is the cost-effectiveness? And in this case, this has been more cost-effective to have these types of bids and go out and get these types of subcontractors, and this is what they do, they have all the employees that are all certified based on the bids that we have. And even from, in this time span that we have the most recent contracts in nine years, us being able to bring those prices down year over year as well, too. But it's always something that, you know, that we'll, from procurement perspective and with each of the different divisions and departments, that we will look to, again, what's the biggest cost benefit for us doing it in-house versus having it subcontracted out in partners.
Okay, so then it's my understanding you've actually done a cost analysis on this?
We have, yes.
Can you supply us with that, please? Thank you.
So, I'm the one that actually pulled this, and because my concern was, I was going by the Florida auditors' questions. And, and I know we've had, we've had a conversation, and y'all explained that to me. However, they were really clear about the certifications, and I, I respect that's what, why y'all extended this out, but this goes from May, and I was just going by, on this, with the spirit of transparency, that this would go back out for bid because it's, you know, eight months old. Now, I was explaining that they've signed a contract and it's for five years and so forth, but we have lost eight months of, during this, with this process. And also, when I saw the non-responsive, I actually contacted the two vendors that were non-responsive, and they explained to me that they were responsive. And one was a one month shy from the lead pay, lead abatement or something, or one other qualifications. So I just feel like, for me, that...
You contacted the vendors?
I contacted both of them, yes. And because when it's non-responsive, I want to know why they weren't responsive. Why, who doesn't want to do business with the district? That's, you know, really important to me. So I asked them to supply the information. They, they were, they were responding with the district all the way up to the middle of December. So all the way up to December, they were thinking, then they were ranked number two. So you understand their frustration, and it was regarding a certification, so they can't sub out. So I think that, and just in the spirit of transparency, we go back out for bid, that's all I was really wanting, and making that available for those other thirty-four vendors. I really am curious why thirty-four vendors didn't respond, and I just want to give fair and equitable ability to all, and let's, let's do business with the district. And I want to show them that they can. And I'm, that's just where I was at with, with that point, pulling this item.
Great, great, I'm, I'm happy to answer your questions, I think they're good questions. If I was in your seat, I'd be asking the same questions. I think as taxpayers, we need to ask these questions, and we pride ourselves, the work that I and my colleagues do, we are fully compliant, transparent, and, and practice professionally, and we take great pride in what we do, so I'd be happy to explain that and answer your questions. So the first question that I heard is that you wanted to know about the delay in awarding the contract in January when bids were received in May. This is a point of pride for us. We anticipated the expiration of the contract, we had evaluated responses, and we then received an audit that was asking questions about this particular contract. So we postured to the board, I believe in June, that we would like an extension of the contract for six months, which is a basic term in our of our contracts, so that we have the opportunity to evaluate needs if a contract is nearing extension, or if for some reason there are problems renewing or rebidding a contract. So the reason for the extension into January is because we wanted to be compliant with our auditor's request for information and assess, when they give us feedback, are there changes that we should make to the projects that we issue? And rather than jump forward and issue the contract and request board approval during an audit, we took pride in waiting until we heard from the auditors, addressing the questions that were asked. The, the questions were concluded in, on December 21st, and we were postured to request the board on January 9th to award this bid. So we take great pride in, in posturing through all of those changes to have everything in place and ready to go. So I say kudos to the team, the procurement team led by Frederick Ross who did that.
And that's our process, and that is how we are transparent. We are extremely transparent, and we get many accolades in the way that we do do business and for a variety of our vendors, for the majority of our vendors, and how we do business with the district and the tremendous opportunities that are available to them to do business with the district. And some of the community outreach that we've done, our vendor open houses, and letting them know about the process, the procedures, the people, and how you do business with the district. Obviously, there are always times when vendors don't get the bid, it's disappointing for, for anyone that doesn't win the bid, it's, you know, especially if it's a big job, and we understand that, but there's always opportunities then, you know, that they have that we can reach out and they can understand, okay, how did, you know, what did we miss, what were things that we can improve upon? And these bids come up, you know, depending on the type of contract, you know, on, on a, on a cycling basis, so definitely understand, you know, the questions that you have, but the transparency one hundred percent is there, the process is there, and it continues to improve. And one of the things from this, as far as a, an action from this meeting, is, you know, with all of you, and you'll see some of the process today, but going more into how the procurement process works, what are the different areas and divisions and departments that we procure services and how those different processes work from construction to maintenance to information systems and so on. There's a, a ton of business that is transacted with the, with the district every single day, with hundreds of different types of vendors, from, from the smallest vendors to the very largest vendors in building our schools.
You mentioned best practices, can you talk to me about how you determine what best practices are?
Certainly. Our teams participate in local, state, regional, and national purchasing programs. We are members of NIGP at the national level. We lead the local Gulf Coast area purchasing consortium where we meet quarterly and present vendor open houses with all of the, with nineteen government agencies in the surrounding area, not just school districts, but other, you know, the county government, the court authority, the tax collector. And we invite vendors to come in, see what kind of things we are in the need for, and meet with us to tell us about their services and to explain to them how to conduct business with each of the entities. Because different laws govern school boards about purchasing than county governments, for example, for purchasing. So we invite our vendors in, not only collectively but individually, and share with them what it takes, what it needs to be done to check off the boxes to comply with each of the governments. And I'd actually like to ask Mr. Ross to, my favorite thing, since Mr. Ross has been here, that he's done is he's hosted a, we've hosted many vendor open houses and events here, and within the past year, you've spoken at least two or three times, but I'd like you to particularly talk about the how-to-do-business session we conducted for the public and the matchmaking program that you set up.
Yes, that was actually, event actually held right here in this, in the room, when we had both sides and invited the vendor community out. We had our different divisions and departments, all that tables set up around here, also our construction managers that we're engaged with, whether it be on a new school or on our continuous, continuing contracts, that table as well. And it was kind of just an open house where they could first talk to us, talk to the procurement department, learn how to do business, everything from registering to how to submit a bid and respond to proposals. And, and then had that open, open time when they can mosey around and talk to the different departments, talk to the different CMs, and find out as a vendor, how can I specifically in my service or my product, do business with the, the district? And it was a, a great event, we are making an annual event now, so we can host that vendor community and outreach. Also, we've been out to some of the other organizations.
to comply with each of the governments. And I'd actually like to ask Mr. Ross to, my favorite thing, since Mr. Ross has been here that he's done, is he's hosted a, we've hosted many vendor open houses and events here. And within the past year, you've spoken at least two or three times. But I'd like you to particularly talk about the how-to-do-business session we conducted for the public and the matchmaking program that you set up.
Yes, that was a actual event, actually held right here in this, in the room when we had both sides and invited the vendor community out. We had our different divisions and departments, all that tables set up around here. Also, our construction managers that we're engaged with, whether it be on a new school or on our continuous, continuing contracts, that table as well. And it was kind of just an open house where they could first talk to us, talk to the procurement department, learn how to do business, everything from registering to how to submit a bid and respond to proposals. And, and then had that open, open time when they can mosey around and talk to the different departments, talk to the different CMs, and find out as a vendor, how can I specifically, in my service or my product, do business with the, the district? And it was a, a great event. We are making an annual event now so we can host that vendor community and outreach. Also, we've been out to some of the other organizations, the Lee County Economic Development Council, the Small Business Development Council at FGCU, and spoke at workshops and, and different vendor events. They're really just reaching out, inviting the vendors to, to participate in the process.
Another best practice, Ms. Vaughn, I see you have a question. I want to finish that question and then go on to Ms. Vaughn. Another best practice we have is, we go to the state and obtain lists frequently. We have a refresh of their small and disadvantaged businesses. We also go to the county and obtain their list. We do not have a requirement for having a percentage set aside for small and disadvantaged businesses, as some do. However, we are proactive to go and obtain those lists. And we reach out and contact, so one of your questions was, how come 34 vendors were contacted and didn't respond? We typically reach out to 20 to 100 vendors, notifying them of opportunities, including all of the vendors on the, in the area of interest that are on the state and the county small business list so that they are aware of what we do. We host the workshop to show them frequently-made errors so that you can submit a client, a compliant bid. Because nobody likes to reject a bid, and nobody likes to have their bid rejected. It's a waste of time for all parties. So, we go through, these are the common mistakes. We'll educate you how to avoid them. And so, our vendor outreach is a program that we're, you know, trying to, and a good example is when we submit a painting bid, if it's only for painting services, we still contact and send the bid to those vendors who offer painting supplies. Because they might know someone who's interested in bidding. They probably aren't qualified to bid, but they have contacts. It is in the district's best interest to outreach and cast as far a net as possible so that we can receive as many bids as possible because more competition is healthy and best for everyone. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, and I actually have two questions. I'll, I'll go backward. I'll start with Ms., Mr. Ross. Is it not true that the IAQ is limited only to Lee County vendors? You say, Ms. Malley, you just said that you spread a net wide. But my understanding is that we do not accept bids on the IAQ for vendors that live in, or that are based in Collier or Charlotte County?
No.
Is that not true?
No, I don't think that's true. I think that what it is, is a, a mileage proximity that we put on there. And the reason for that is, given this indoor air quality category, there's a responsiveness that's needed by the maintenance department. When something happens and something's flooded, you know, we can't wait for somebody to come from Miami or Tampa, you know, to tell them to come do it. There needs to be an appropriate response.
I'm talking about Charlotte, Charlotte and Collier. And I'm also wondering, what, can you give me an example of a kind of emergency that might occur that someone that's based in Naples couldn't get? I mean, if there's a flood, don't you, if it's a water main break, don't you call a plumber? Don't you have somebody, I mean, what? What would necessitate that? Give me an example, please.
The, the specifications require a response time for emergency situations of one hour.
Is this county or state?
Just emergency response.
This is our specification.
This is Lee County school specification.
We require for indoor air quality, for emergency response time, if you're going to work with us, you have to commit to, from having, being a request to come out, a one-hour response time. For non-emergency situations, we require a four-hour response time. The bottom line is indoor air quality issues are serious environmental issues that must be promptly addressed. So, if, when anyone submits a bid, if they are in Collier, Charlotte, Hendry, and they demonstrate that they have, and I think we use this central office if I'm not mistaken, you know, demonstrate that you can be here within one to four hours, then you're-
Part of the criteria.
Then, then you're eligible. And usually, they go to Google Maps and say, here's your office, here's mine. It says 62 miles, Collier certainly, within 62 miles. And, and so, vendors from those communities are invited to bid. It is not a geographic restriction.
Okay.
It's not a requirement to the end of Lee County. It is a restriction driven by response time of the, of the work.
Okay, and then I wanted to go back to something Mr. Blerton had said. You were talking about transparency and planning. I actually take exception to that because the planning was that the contract was going to expire exactly a week after the school board meeting of, of last week. Do you not plan ahead and think about, well? Do you just assume that the school board is going to rubber stamp everything without looking at it? Do you not take into consideration that it may not be passed? And we may now get in a situation, because we covered ourselves with a special meeting. But now, we're in a situation, and I'm quoting from Dr. Atkins' letter from, I think it's yesterday, when this was pulled, I believe it is in the best interest of this board and all concerned that this recommendation not go forward until professional standards and equity has had time to conduct a thorough investigation into the letter received this week alleging misconduct. Once this has been resolved, I'll bring the item back to the board. So, meanwhile, to meet the needs of the district as it relates to this matter as discussed at the January 8th board meeting, I will proceed with purchasing emergency services, services for emergency situations. So, what I'm taking exception to here is the fact that had this been planned ahead, maybe for a board meeting, maybe on the agenda for two weeks earlier, perhaps some of this situation would have been avoided. So, I'd like you to speak to that.
Ms. Vaughn, I will tell you, there was plenty of planning ahead of time. And some of the, from the summer to this time and when that delay had happened because of, you know, an open audit and going through this process with the AG. And really, as this was going forward and in briefing, this particular subject, you know, because of the AG and what that was, what we were going through and, and working with them and what the finding was. And in our response to that finding, it was absolutely proper to hold and to extend. And the dates that we did have, and, and frankly, as this had come up, we did plan ahead. We did have it on there. And there was concern from Ms. Givenelli to pull the item because she wanted questions. And that's where we are today.
Well, so, we're putting on Ms. Givenelli?
For, for, for the item of it being pulled? That's, when a board member has questions and wants to pull, it can be at any time, no matter how much planning that we have.
I don't see it that way.
No, no, with any of you. It could have been Ms. Patrica, it could have been Ms. Givens.
It could have been me, I asked for more discussion on it, actually.
So, that's where we are. And that's our, if, if a board member pulls an agenda item because there are questions about it, then that's the process, absolutely. And we're following the process.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, if this had been brought forth at, let's say, a board meeting two weeks earlier, since you're already working under the delay that happened because of the auditor's findings, then we wouldn't be, perhaps we wouldn't be in this situation. Because now, something else has happened.
So, I'll let you to the other part.
So, what can I say?
The other piece of it, we were, so the meeting, the, the special board meeting that was scheduled for four o'clock today was for the board to vote on this item to go forward.
Right, exactly.
However, there has been information that has been shared that we, as staff, felt it was not appropriate to go forward with the bid because of what you just read. It, that, that does not make sense. Due diligence needs to be done. We need to go through that process because the last thing that we want to do is to go forward with any information that we don't know enough about. This just came to our attention. So, that is the process. And that is why we are where we are and in a situation where these services, we will have to purchase emergency services because this bid will expire. The planning has been there, and I'll just, I'll, we'll agree to disagree on that, that the planning was there, the timing was there, the item was pulled. We're going through the process. Now, there's new information that we are now further going to go through and delay as well, too, because of that.
But the best-laid plans of mice and men, and when we're being proactive, we factor in those things. And so, we're going to agree to disagree, but that is my feeling. And the public can find these documents on, online. If you're, since we're educating the public as well as to what precipitated this further delay.
Well, I'd like to address your, your, your question, Ms. Vaughn. I agree with you that I believe it, it would be in the best interest of all, especially board members, that we, that I will take the action to evaluate those bids that are over perhaps a million dollars. That they come before the board at least two weeks in advance of a request for a vote. I think that is the prudent thing to do. That gives the board opportunity to ask more questions. And it is, it is appropriate for that to occur. And our process is transparent. And we invite in, in questions about the process, about particular awards. And I commit to you that we will use the million-dollar threshold as the mark for bringing to, for, to the board, perhaps in the briefing format, just an overview of what, what the services are, what the process was, who we're recommending, and allow for your questions to be answered, researched if needed to be, so that prior to a, a vote taking place, you have that opportunity.
Okay, and I think that's, I, I thank you. And I think that's a very appropriate response, that, that we do spend a little extra time to give ourselves that leeway. Because as I said, the best-laid plans of, of mice and men, and it's an unfortunate incident.
So, we were originally postured in May to bring this forward to the, before it expired in July. And I, again, take great pride in the work done by staff in multiple departments at this district who have the forethought to look ahead, plan, posture. And here we've been with so many roadblocks that have come, we still have been able to bring it before the board in time. And we will have a very small window of opportunity for delays or emergency purchases. And an emergency purchasing policy is in place that we will use if, as needed. So, if there aren't any questions, Ms.-
Ms. Givenelli had anything?
Ms. Givenelli still had another question that I hadn't answered, which you asked previously. And so, one of it was about compliance with requirements. So, you said that two vendors were not awarded the bid because they were deemed non-responsive. And so, that you took action to reach out to those vendors and ask them about their non responsiveness. So, I, I would invite you to contact the procurement department in the future, should you have questions about that, so that can be explained. Because they are the ones that have made that decision and documented that decision. And in fact, we have given, one of the vendors was kind of non-responsive out the gate and didn't even get to the interview process or the question and answer process. The other one, we kept looking. It is in our best interest on this bid to award as many contractors as possible. And so, we have three vendors up for award. We had four. And as we got down close to bringing it to the board and double and triple and quadruple-checked certifications, one vendor was missing the lead abatement and lead abatement supervisor certification. And therefore, since that was a requirement of the specs, they were non-compliant. What we do in that case is we contact the vendor and say, we are unable to locate those certifications in your bid. Can you please point us to them? Did we miss it? They said no. So, we went through another review and compared the lead abatement legal compliance requirements in statutes as, because the statutes define what those qualifications are. And we did, we determined not to award to that vendor because they did not have the statutory requirements, and so they were deemed non-responsive.
So, that leads me to a couple of questions. And, and I'm going to actually take your side because, Mrs. Vaughn, they were still, they still wrote a letter defending the, a, the auditor generals on the 21st of December. So, they, this could not have been dealt with in December prior to vacation. So, I, do, do we have a response from that, though? Now, we're in January. Do we have a response from the December 21st letter from the Florida auditor?
No, it's the depart, it's the DOE. So, the AG does their audit, and the DOE has the option to follow up on the findings themselves. And so, we followed through and sent that follow-up. They had follow-up on the questions, is there any additional information required? So, we sent that information and that letter out on the 21st, and we have not had any response.
Right, so, that just more confirms for me that we should just redo the process and make sure everything is up to making everyone happy as per the audit. And so, that's why, and so, and then my other question is, like, I was given invoices for Fresh Air, but I do not see the dates. And I had requested the dates on those invoices. And so, you're telling me that when you responded back to the auditor, you did not give them any dates? You just gave them those, that, that, the same thing you gave me, is what you told me, and they weren't dated?
No. So, when we are audited and when the state chooses to come in and audit our systems, they come and reside on-site for up to a year. And they are given access to our work order system and to our people's office system, our invoicing system. And they pull each and every invoice that they choose to. And so, the invoices were not pulled and given to the auditors. The auditor came and sat at our desks and pulled all of the ones that they wanted. And of the ones that were pulled, you know, of the ones they chose to look at, their staff pulled those, those documents. So, we don't have those in a pile that we handed to the auditor.
But you did give me a list, and those, that list does not have any dates on it. So, that's, I'm just, I, I really wanted to see a couple invoices to see what actually, what was the service, the services Fresh Air did for us.
Okay.
And I never got that information. The board has to approve that, because apparently, it's a lot. And, and actually, I don't even need a lot. I just need to see what Fresh Air does. I, I've been told different things. So, I'm curious what Fresh Air does. I mean, do they do the abatement? Do they do the testing? What do they do actually for the district?
Right, so that's all, that all information is publicly posted, who has the opportunity to do which. So, this particular contract, rather than spending staff's time to issue two different bids, one for the testing and one for the execution and corrective measures, we issue a single bid so that we don't have two board agendas and two public meetings for, and two scorings, and two, et cetera. We cut our costs in half by having a category A and a category B. Vendors may bid on one, A or B or both. And then, we issue one bid that allows for vendors, anyone who conducts the testing, may not perform on the remediation side. So, if they don't conduct the testing, they can perform the remediation. And so, we have one bid. The great thing about that is we can negotiate right rates. That is a consistent, as you'll look at for the past nine years, our rates are. We negotiate a common low rate with all the vendors so that everybody's paying the same price so that as we're evaluating, do we send it to them? Because they're $2 cheaper on this category, and we think that this one's for, you know, removing rodents, whatever problem we have. So, we give a lot of thought and care into how to negotiate prices, how to structure it so that we can make the most effective use of our time and of the vendors.
Yeah, I understand that, but you still didn't answer the question. What does Fresh Air, what have they done? I haven't seen an invoice to see what actually, what service they did. Did they do the testing? Did they do the abatement? What did they do?
So, Fresh Air is not a, one of the ones awarded in category A, so they did not do the testing. Okay, so, we probably have several thousand invoices. And the requests that we've received have been so voluminous and for so much different information. What we've asked is, can we skinny it down a little bit? Can we get to, you know, what particularly are, are we looking to report data on? And, and so, what I just heard is, you know, I could pull any invoice for any service that was provided for a vendor, but that wasn't the request that we originally received.
Well, if you'd like, I mean, again, we could ask our maintenance team to come up and give you some examples of some work that Fresh Air does for the district, and that would be helpful.
Well, actually, what would really be helpful, if the auditor can go and look at the invoices. Can I do that? That's what I'd like to do. I'd love to come to the office, you set me down in front of the computer and show me what the invoices, and I can look at them myself. I don't have to pull a paper, I know, I can just open it up, look at it, and then I can see the invoices myself. And that's all I'm asking.
Ms. Patrica?
I have a question for Attorney Doughty.
Sure.
Is there anything in our policies that either permits or prohibits us from requesting that we go out to bid again simply because a contract has expired?
Can I, can I just interrupt that really quickly? My next question to the group and comment was going to be, we have options. We can stick with the two that are there and continue with the contract or, I mean, that I don't know. There were three on there. So, is, is that a possibility? And basically, I'm saying, what are our options?
Right now.
Considering the fact of what's happening with Fresh Air, that they are, there's still an investigation. So, do we just exclude them? There's a possibility if we exclude them and just wait till three years and let them come back? What are our options? And I think that would cover your question. Is that, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, so, one option is to postpone taking a vote on awarding this bid and award it at a future date after all questions have been answered.
And that would include continuing, continuing the emergency funds?
Correct. So, the current con, currently, the district does not have a contract in place. It expired January 10th. So, we had in, in advance a six-month opportunity for an extension. We exercised that opportunity. So, now, we don't have the opportunity to extend the old contract, and we have not awarded the new contract. So, we have a school board policy that allows for emergency purchases of anything that would exceed $50,000 in aggregate that is not with, not under a contract. So, one option is to bring forward the recommendation at a future board- So one option is to bring forward the recommendation at a future board meeting to vote on whether or not to approve the bid that has been properly vetted, executed. Three vendors have been selected for award and recommended for award, and are ready to go. One thing that I would say that I have been cautioned against by prior counsel, is that one thing, one mantra we live by is making sure that we never give an unfair competitive advantage to a vendor. So if we were to cancel this bid and have a do-over, that would give the vendor who did not comply with the requirements, the opportunity to go and get certified, submit a bid, and then receive potentially, if they put in as good as, as good as they did this time, and it was still competitive and agreed the pricing, then they would be taking work away from vendors who already followed all the rules and were compliant, and now aren't gonna get as much work, because somebody was given an unfair competitive advantage to do, for the do-over.
Okay, that's one option. What's another?
So, so one option is to redo the bid.
Right.
Okay, and the third option is, until bid is in place, to use emergency purchases, and my recommendation would be to use vendors that have already been vetted, demonstrated that they have the certifications, agree to the terms and conditions of our contracts that we've had in place and will be in place, and agree to the new lowest pricing that we've put in place, because our team has negotiated reduced rates on average of 20% of this contract over the contract that expired on January 10th. And so my recommendation would be, purchase, one recommend, one option is purchasing the emergency services with the, the lower rates for up to three vendors who are already considered for award.
So that, that was gonna be a question I had, actually. So the, the contract that was extended was, how many vendors?
Two.
And who were they?
AMRC and Fresh Air.
Okay, and so now we've added a carpet person?
No, we've, we've added a company that also does mold remediation services, similar in Collier County, they have firefighter, I believe, is, is their vendor, and we have hired a firm that, one of the things that they do is carpet cleaning, Stanley Steamer Carpet Cleaning, that's not their full name, they do other, they have different departments that do, that have all of the licensing to do the types of services that we need. So yes, we are taking forward a recommendation to award to three vendors.
With this bid.
Right, and that's my.
Including Fresh Air.
So, and that's my.
That was the bid that we were going, that we had the special meeting before you that is canceled to do, to the due diligence on some of the information that was just shared with us this week.
So that's my question, could we have, is there a limit? Could we have four vendors? I mean, if, if you have so much work, I mean, it's $2.8 million times five, so my concern, you know, is, that, I mean, that's a lot of business, so why wouldn't we share it a little bit, and, and who, and especially if you're talking about a response time that's so important, why would you only be limited to one? Because if you've only got three, that means only one can test, and only one can do the abatement, so that leaves, that leaves one out there.
So.
Yeah, it was the intent to multi-award and have multiple vendors on, for each services, higher, two vendors were non-responsive, so we could not award them.
So how many did you have total?
We had five vendors submit.
You had five on there, two were non-responsive.
Correct.
One is the one that we were discussing, and has the issues, which leaves us two.
Two of them.
So is it possible to go forward with those two?
Yes.
And the, okay, I, I'm gonna make a suggestion, that you provide us those options.
Okay.
And the cost included with it. If we go with, stick with the emergency and bid it out again, how much is that likely to cost us? If we go with just the two, what is the cost factor?
Great idea.
That we have two? So if you can, and, let's ask if everyone is in agreement with that, but I think to save time, and to kind of bring it down to, you know, apples and apples, and not apples and oranges, tell us, these are our options, this is what it's gonna cost, and, you know, put it on a level that we all can understand. So can I ask any comments on that from anybody else, or can we just take a straw vote and see those that are, and, and basically, that they would come back with us, to us, with the options that we have, since there is the issue with the, the one company?
Fresh Air.
With Fresh Air. Yes.
Shouldn't we get, be getting that recommendation from the superintendent?
Right, wouldn't that be from the superintendent?
Well, so, I, I will say, so, these services are needed now.
Right, that's the problem.
Right.
So the, the real recommendation is, is based on Board Policy 6.07, is that with the superintendent's recommendation authority, that we do go forward with emergency services, and we already are going forward with emergency services.
And we are, because it's stopgap right now.
Correct. And so that's the recommendation, is that we continue to go forward with those services now, while we do our due diligence on the vendor, that, that one of the, one of the three vendors for this current bid that is outstanding, that we do our due diligence, get that done, and as diligently as possible, go through the process, and come, and come back with what that has, what we've been able to find, and then come back to you, because one of the recommendations that we, that we will recommend not doing is rebidding this all over again.
Right.
For the unfair competitive advantage.
Exactly, I got that.
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at, in actuality, rebidding, which none of us really want to do.
Correct.
Number two is going ahead with the two, forgetting about the third one that has issues, and number three.
No, no, we're, so that's not a, we're not going forward with the two.
Is that not an option?
So those services that we will be procuring for these needs as they're happening right now, we will utilize the same, we will offer the same terms and conditions for those services to vendors that will provide these services for these emergency situations. The difference is, is we're not, we can't be proactive, these things come up, we have to react and take care of it right now.
And I understand, do you understand what I'm saying?
I think that Ms. Gittin was asking, can we?
Can we do two?
Although the recommendation for award has been, come before the superintendent to award to three vendors, the question is, could the recommendation for award come before the board for two vendors?
Right.
Instead of three?
Which, which would be very timely. We meet next week, we have an action meeting, we could vote on it then.
Yeah, so Mr. Doty, I would ask your opinion of, if that would, you know, what the ramifications would be to exclude a vendor?
Out there.
After they have been notified that they're compliant and selected for award, and then they're not selected forward, so I would prefer to have Mr. Doty weigh in on that.
Right. Well, the process for a vendor that feels that they, their rights have been violated involves what's called a bid protest. So it does open up the potential for the school district to receive a protest from that company that has already been notified that they were being awarded the bid.
Correct. Okay, for lack of time, I think we need to.
One, one thing on, on that, we're talking about time of the essence, but given the allegations, the unproven allegations that involve things having to do with Hurricane Irma, which is federal, I mean, there are some pretty heavy-duty allegations, and I don't feel comfortable going forward with the Fresh Air company until all the investigations are done.
That's why we're not having a meeting today.
But that, but what I'm saying is, that could be a really, really long process. Just, just, just saying. So it might be something that Mr. Doty could look into, and, you know, I'm, I'm just guessing that if any, if there are even shreds of truth out there about those things, that company may not want to put themselves out, I mean, that's, that's a gamble, and I don't wanna gamble with anybody's money, or, or the school districts, or anything like that, but this, this is something that, it's, it's a real can of worms.
It is.
That was opened on these allegations, and I, I think that, you know, the person that sent that letter is not, by the way, some anonymous person, it's easy in a five-minute Google search to find that person, he's not hiding his identity.
Which is why, you know, we are, we are taking this very seriously, you know, we turned it over to, to Mr. Brown very quickly, and he immediately got law enforcement involved. We are taking the extra step in this case, he has already sent this material to the Inspector General of the State of Florida.
Good.
So they have it in their possession right now, and he's asked them to advise him, he's outlined the steps that he's gonna take, and then advise him if there's anything else. And there's always, you know, the inspector general may want to look at it as well, but at least we're working with local law enforcement, and also with the state, to make sure that we report back to you, and we do our due diligence as it relates to this particular letter. This letter, you know, I, I do agree with you that, you know, we have a name, we have two addresses, he has sent certified letters.
It's one address, I believe, because it looks like that is a typo, because that is that person's Tony Frantzel, that is his business address.
Can I, can I just interject, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah.
I don't, the, there's a statute that prevents the disclosure of information that is the subject of an employee investigation.
Okay.
So, before we go too far.
Okay, okay.
And I'm going, I'm gonna jump in again, because of the time factor, and I will ask again, can you reiterate where do we stand, what our options are, since we're in the emergency status? And if everyone agrees that, we have a meeting next week, we have a briefing and an action meeting, so perhaps at one of those, you could, you know, we can decide.
We can update you how, how.
You can update us, and then we can say this, we can do this, 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 or this, it'll cost this, and then we make a decision, is, can we all?
I just wanna know, I, I just wanna know what we're, what I would like to know from you is, given the, the unique circumstances here, are we permitted to go ahead with the two vendors? Can, can someone file a successful bid protest, given the fact that they're under investigation?
Exactly. I don't know the answer to that.
Right, and, and so that's a question.
I can surmise that based on currently what is going on, no. However, the timing of everything is important.
So if we could ask you to get that.
I will advise the board that I would have advised you, if the special meeting had stayed scheduled, that it would not be advisable to approve of that vendor.
Of course.
To, of course. So, so can?
So why can't we just go back to the vote? That's just all I was hoping for, we didn't get to into it, but one of the things about the protocols that I was wanting to bring up is, during advisory meetings, in this process, because I actually spoke to Dr. Atkins about this, it used to be recorded, the RP process used to be recorded at the construction department. They don't have that here, but I don't understand why that can't, that's just part of that transparency that I'm trying to have for the community, and the ability to have that. And so, I mean, I don't, just don't understand, why can't we just, let's put it back for bid, and get this done in another month? I, I just don't understand.
I need to address that our bid openings and our meetings are recorded, and audio recording.
And open to the public.
And open, and everyone is posted and open to the public, it is completely transparent.
I understand.
The other thing, though, you know, that you and I talked about, was that if, if the board so desires, we can certainly look into outfitting one of the rooms here, you know, like Train Room D or A, B, with that type of equipment. The equipment over in Canal Street now is outdated, VHS recorders, it is also very impractical for a lot of staff to be going over there, school board staff to go set up there, it's much easier to do it in this building, and I think it's a more comfortable environment for most, unless it's the maintenance department, so that's something that, that we could certainly look into, bringing forward a recommendation to outfit one of those rooms, so they can be.
And, and that actually, not to cut you off, but that, we can discuss when we get to the protocols in the advisory committee section, if you don't mind, you know, we do it there.
Okay, yeah.
So to conclude with you, you will bring to us, and get with Mr. Doty, and come up with whatever legalities we might face, and financial situations we might face.
An update at the briefing.
And an update at the briefing, and then we can, can we, if we update it at the briefing, can we bring it forward at the six o'clock action? Is that too quick, or?
Well, I mean, if it's good cause, sure.
Okay, and then perhaps you can bring it forward as good cause?
Just be mindful of the fact that Monday is a holiday.
Oh, no, I know.
So tomorrow's the only workday between now and the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's also, we have, we wouldn't be able to do it Tuesday from publishing in advance of the award for the change, and there is due process, and.
Well, even if you just brought us up today.
No, we absolutely will bring it up to date.
And we agreed on, this is the way we're going to go, then if we needed to have an emergency meeting to put that in place, we could, but at least to just get it on the books, we're going this, down this road.
Correct.
Is that okay?
One last thing, we don't need to have, we have a protocol in place to receive services from qualified vendors at prices negotiated, under terms and conditions, so there is a low risk of, you know, we can operate basically under the contract terms without the contract, the only difference is, those, the expenditures would be reported to the board after, instead of receiving in advance.
Because it's a PO.
The board approval, so really, there is no difference in the emergency process, except the board knows of the expenditures after instead of before.
And it's up to 50, is that what you were saying?
There, there isn't a limit for an emergency purchase, no.
So, and those vendors are? Do you have a list of those? Or you would be using the three?
The vendors that we're recommending for award.
Right, so that you're using those vendors?
Well, we would, we would propose, using two of the proposed vendors, we, my recommendation would be that we would, for during the emergency period, utilize two of the vendors that are proposed, that are, are current vendors who have been on the contract with us for the prior period.
Okay, and I'm, I'm going to be very mean and nasty, and I'm gonna stop the conversation at this point, because we do have to get on to two other items.
But I do, but what about me getting the dates for the, for the, on the, on the con, on the invoices that I requested?
On the, and I thought they said that they were going to get with you.
Dr. Atkins, since you, it was.
If I can interject, I think what she's asking is for the board, under your protocols, for something that's going to take longer than an hour and a half.
Right.
The board has to agree that that's something.
And when we talk about advisory boards.
No, 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 that, this is a specific question to this.
Oh, for them, okay.
To this indoor air quality.
Except to the board.
Ms. Giovanni has requested invoices, or dates of invoices.
Right.
The superintendent's office has indicated that that will take longer than an hour and a half, so the board protocol is for the board to essentially say, we think that's okay for the superintendent's office to spend that time.
Okay. All those in favor of spending the time to get all the details that are necessary, according to Ms. Giovanni, can we see?
Okay, I don't, I don't see those details as being necessary for Mrs. Giovanni, from what I understand, we have the Department of Education reviewing the response that you gave to them, and I don't feel that it's my job as a board member to review invoices, or to require staff and take staff away from their daily jobs of doing their work in the best interest of students, to pull invoices for a board member when we already have a state department that's looking at this for us. So this isn't, for me, this is not just as easy as a yes or, or a no, I think, I mean, part of it is protocol, board members going beyond, you know, into the superintendent's lane, but part of it is also, I, I can't agree to that, I don't think it's appropriate, I think it's a duplication of efforts, something that's already being done by the state, I mean, you know, if the state comes back and says, "We've done something wrong," then maybe, but right now, this is being reviewed.
But the state did.
Correct, and we've responded to the Department of Education, as has been explained to us several times, and we're waiting on a response from the Department of Education.
And alls I'm doing is asking.
It's premature.
To see what the state got, received.
We have violated our norms several times so far in this meeting I was speaking, I'm sorry, but I, I think that, I think that until we get a response from the DOE, it's premature for us to, to, to ask staff to take even more time to respond to this.
Well, if it's, if they're under investigation at this point in time, are, are we overstepping to investigate while they're investigating?
Well, what is, what are our qualifications to investigate? We are not qualified to conduct investigations, that's not our job.
And we're not being investigated, we had our audit.
No, 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 but the company is, and this has to do with the company, correct? And they're being investigated, so, Ms. Giovanni, do you, can, you live with that, that we wait and see, or else, you know, through the DOE, to get it?
But the information provided by Dr. Atkins was a list, and has no date, I don't, how do I live with that? I just asked for dates when the services were.
And is there, is there nothing on a?
So we, we researched all of the, there was about 12 requests that you made, and we went through each one of those requests, and determined the amount of time it would take for us to run the thousands of invoices and dates that you originally requested, and it was gonna be well over five hours of time to do that.
Do, I mean, do, do we not have professionals at the Department of Education that are tasked with doing this? So if they require the dates and the invoices, the Department of Education will ask for that from staff, and then you will be fulfilling your jobs as required according to your job description. This, this is outside the realm of what we're supposed to do, we're, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up, because my head, my back of my head is to you.
No, 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 what I was just saying, is that I know, I understand what they're saying, as far as an audit, they don't choose what they're going to ask for, what they look for, it is an open book for them, they have no idea what pages that they are going to. If anyone has ever been audited at, you know, their company, they know that it's like curb line, here you go, have a seat, look and find what you're gonna find, and that's exactly what, they have to give them open range to do whatever.
And I asked for some of the invoices that had, where they. And I asked for some of the invoices that had, where they, uh, the baseball field was leveled and stuff like, I asked for those, just to look at that invoice. And that has to do with AMRC, it has nothing to do with fresh air. So, because I'm just curious on the date of the service.
Okay. Can, can we agree to have them, rather than five hours, to, to give them one instance and you pull one instance, how long would that take?
What invoice?
Yes.
That'd be less than an hour and a half.
Okay.
But we were asked to pull thousands of invoices.
Okay, can we, can we agree to pull one so that you would have an idea what it is you're looking for?
Well, one of the, one of the questions was, uh, how, how, how many services we've done for lead. But actually, Mr. Flock answered that or one of the other gentlemen answered. They, they've done very little lead, but I couldn't get that answered on Monday. They didn't know and they said that would take hours.
And it took hours to determine if we had done that or not. So, um, I, I would not give you an answer unless I knew that it was accurate. So when you asked me how many invoices we've done for lead and I didn't know the answer, I went to Mr. Flock and asked the question and he researched it.
Right, but no one ever, no one responded back to me and told me that.
There were very, very many responses we were trying to respond to you with.
Yes. Okay. Can we agree that you will let them know about one invoice so that you can, that has the dates and everything and then from there, you can go forward as to see if we need any others?
Sure.
Okay, so then we don't, and you guys are going to get back to us with our options and the investigation goes on and we don't have to have a vote and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, maybe we should have them last. All right, our next part is going to be about protocol. Um, we're going to talk about protocol. And we sent out an email to, um, Susan, I think, sent out an email to all of the board members that if you had any questions about protocol, that you would bring it forward at this time. Susan, did you get any?
I received one.
Okay, so then we will go on with what we've already discussed. On November, uh, fourteenth, we had a meeting, a pre, uh, what do you call it? Pre whatever.
Pre-organization.
Pre-organizational, I knew that word was in there. Pre-organizational meeting to discuss some of the protocols and things that we wanted to do as a board. Um, some members, including myself, felt that we needed to revisit that for various reasons. And so basically, that's what we're going to do. It's going to be, um, led by, let me see, Cindy.
Okay, go ahead. All right, good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Dodik. Uh, Cindy and I are here today to talk with you exactly relative to what Mrs. Gittens just referred to, and that is the board protocols. So we do have a practice where we periodically review these. As I said at the top of the hour, this is our opportunity to tweak things as we get further into the work together, especially with the election. We know we have new board members who came on and so there's that opportunity always to use this as a living, breathing document. It's not a one-time shock. So thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Um, as we begin the conversation, we, uh, will reference a couple of items. Cindy's going to drive the, uh, work, uh, as we take notes on, um, the proposed changes. If there are proposed changes, we would certainly entertain those. We will do our very best to go to the section that you're referring to and we can look at current language and if there's language that needs to be tweaked at the pleasure of the board, we'll go ahead and make those revisions. We will commit to you, um, to do our very best to take those notes today. But if you give us a little time after the meeting, we will go and wordsmith that beautifully and get that back to you in, in via email, if that, if that meets with your pleasure.
And make it look pretty.
That's right.
So I will go through the list that I have, I guess, and you will coordinate that.
Yes, please.
On the screen.
Yes.
Excuse me, the first thing I have is about response to public comments. And, um, there were, there was, I, I think a little bit of, um, unsurety with this board based on the last board. And the last board, I believe, had said that only the chair would respond to public comment.
After public comment, but they would have the opportunity to respond at the end before bed more comments.
During. Exactly, and the reason that I wanted to put that on there though, um, I remember at one of my first meetings, the first meeting, I think the first full meeting, and there was a public comment about something with mental health. And I know that, uh, Ms. Fisher, that's her baby. So I asked her if she would mind responding to that person in the audience because I knew she'd have a, a more thorough answer than I would at the time. And we all know that sometimes people will come and they'll, uh, take part in public comment and then they leave for, for various reasons. So I wanted to bring this up to discuss, not that we're going to have everybody on the board speak to everybody that comes up for public comments.
Please, please and thank you.
Please and thank you. But in certain situations, if, if it's something that you are, you know, intricately involved with or know or have an answer that could help someone in the public that has brought up that statement, I think we need to have it in there that that's okay, that we're not going over and stepping over our bounds to react to the public. I personally feel that our meetings belong to the public. They are the public, that's why we do them, so they know what we're doing. So can, any comments on that or what, what do you think?
Yes. Yeah, so my concern was that it wasn't appropriate for a board member to respond to something that is within the superintendent's lane. So the question should have been, or the, the request for a comment should have been directed to the superintendent and not to a board member because a board member should not be put in the position of speaking to what the administration is doing on behalf of students. That was my concern.
Other comments?
Anyone else? Just, you know me, I'm a, I'm a words person and I remember sitting in on the, um, uh, chair, vice chair training at FSBA and where, whenever that occurred, November. And their training said that the action meeting is actually the board's meeting. It's not the superintendent's meeting, it's not the public's meeting. It's the board's meeting where we get work done. And I'm sure that that's what you meant, what, I'm sure that what you meant in what you said was it's the public's meeting in the sense that we're being transparent, we're taking their input and we are, um, you know, we're, we're digesting that input and when appropriate, giving feedback to the superintendent so he can, um, change the direction of staff. But, but I also think it's important, based on our professional training, that we understand that, that that action meeting is actually the board's meeting where we conduct the business of the board. So I'm sorry, I'm just, I might be semantic, but.
No, that's fine, and I understand it is a business meeting and, uh, someone said that to me as well. It is a, it is our business meeting. I understand that, but one of the things that we've got to really focus on is that transparency. And if transparency means that we take a few extra minutes to explain something to the public that has taken the time to come.
Oh, sure, I don't disagree with that.
Then that's, that's what I'm saying. And I, and I'm, I wasn't trying to overstep the superintendent by asking her. Um, I just know that she, you know, that she was involved with that and I, I just don't, I don't, if it comes up like that again in some way, I wouldn't want it to be, you know, okay, it's a zinger because you're not supposed to do that. So that's why I'm trying to get it out on the table now, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make an analogy to, um, school discipline. We have, um, on the books, we have a school discipline plan. But every now and then, from the professional judgment of the teacher, of maybe the assistant principal, the professional judgment of that person, sometimes you bend a little bit. And I would suggest that because in that particular instance, and I remember it well since it was, I think, our first meeting, I, I think it was very appropriate and, and I feel that, um, Ms. Fisher would have said, if she didn't feel, and, and, and it was something, she had a great answer and I think she would have felt comfortable saying, um, I could tell you this and perhaps Dr. Atkins could add to that. But I felt it was very appropriate and, and I think that it behooves us as people on this board, serving the public and responding to the public who sometimes feel that we are non-responsive and condescending to them, I feel that it behooves us to, in our professional judgment, to every now and then bend a rule like that that really has no, I mean, it, it's, it's not like you were, um, changing some vote that we were doing. So that's just my personal opinion on that. It can stay on the books or however the FSBA thinks it should be done. But as people, living, breathing people, dealing with people, I think we need, it's more important for us to be responsive than to be absolutely without, with blinders on.
And I guess the, the question is that I would throw out to the board members, have you ever sat there during that process and someone says something that you do have personal knowledge and a human knowledge about that you could add to make that person feel more a part of this district? And you wanted to say, but you have to wait until the end of the meeting. Not that it's going to happen all the time and I think we are professionals to know, you know, well, every time we get an opportunity, we're not going to jump right in there and say it. But if it's a, a burning thing that you really do and just say, you know, if it's all right, may I speak to that, to that person?
Well, and I, I don't want you to misunderstand, anybody to misunderstand what I said. I, I don't mean it to be that everybody on the board like, oh, I know about that, I know. I, I don't mean it to be that. I mean, it's the, only for the chair or the vice chair's professional judgment. I, I don't think it should be open to all the school board members feeling free to jump because then we'd lose our, I mean, we'd lose, totally lose the meeting and the timing and all of that. But in certain circumstances, I think the professional judgment of the board chair to call on somebody.
Or board chair.
Um, but I would not go with what, you know, unless I, unless I misunderstood what you said with anybody going, oh, I know about that, can I?
Right.
That's for the end, that's, okay.
Um, Ms. Fisher, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say that we still have the opportunity at the end of the meeting, the end of the agenda, under board member comments, to make any comment that's pertinent and could be partially in response to something that happened at public comment. And I think Mrs. Morgan already.
And we do, and we can, we can leave it like that if you like, yes.
But I think what you were referring to is that, um, someone who was up there speaking may leave and not have the opportunity to hear.
And a lot to, to hear what it is that you have to say.
The response that we would be given at the end.
Yes, and that's, that's what.
Just that you adhered to the question to me the other day.
Right.
You know, because that was my.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and because they fill out the blue card, we do have their contact information. So we have the ability to send that information to them.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, so it sounds as though we're in consensus, but we will check to leave it as it is. That any questions and responses to the, uh, public comment will be from the chair, co-chair, um, vice chair, or the superintendent or the attorney. Um, all in agreement? That was easy, we're done with that one, okay. Um, another thing we, did you guys have comments on that?
No, we're fine, we're good, we're just conferring.
Okay.
Yes.
The other one was, um, we've gone back and forth about having paper agendas. And, uh, currently we don't. Some people say we wasted a lot of paper, is Trey in the room? I didn't say that, Trey. It's not taped, it's nothing, okay. Um, that there were copies and people didn't always take them. Again, and I'm going to continue to go back to transparency and, and including the public, that if there were some way, um, I've gotten comments from people that especially when we do consent items, that it's, uh, kind of a blur. It's like, okay, everybody agree on this here, everybody raise your hand, and no, okay, bye, we're done. So, and people don't even understand what it is that we're talking about. I know they can go online and they can look at board docs and they can click and click and click and find it. A suggestion might be, A, to have a very brief and short and concise description of those consent items up on the screen. I know sometimes there's a lot, but just to have like, you know, in sections so that people can see. Otherwise, um, a handout of just those types of consent items. And I'd like to throw that out on the table.
The thought of paper makes my head want to explode.
I know, it's already, I was looking at you and hearing.
But, but the bigger, the, really, the bigger concern, this is not about me and my head exploding, it's not about Mr. Davis or his head exploding, it's about, I'm hearing that. I, I don't feel like we can make decisions based on, I heard this from this person or I heard this from this group of people. I, I feel like we, we need to act based on data. And we are a district that has, um, committed to sustainability and to eliminating paper to the greatest extent possible. And so that, it seems counterintuitive to what we've committed to. And also, it feels like we are reacting to, I've heard this and I've heard that. Is there a way to measure, you know, whether this is a concern in our?
And I was just going to ask you that, are we measuring what we've heard? It's not like one person said it.
I understand, I understand.
And, um.
But we have seven hundred and forty-nine thousand people in this district and, and at.
And I understand.
And at what point does, does, does public feedback regarding a specific item require us to change the way we do things? I think that, that's maybe perhaps a larger discussion we should have as a board, um, with, with regard to, you know, direction and priorities and, and all of that. At, you know, how do we measure these things and, and are we reacting to anecdote as opposed to data?
Well, okay, I see your point. I also think if we intend to increase our sensitivity and, and openness to the public, that, that means we're going to have to make some hard decisions to make some changes. They may not be comfortable because we've always done it this way and they can, you know, get the information this way or that way. But if they're not getting the information and more than one person and people are saying, you know, how do we know what you're doing? Yes.
But I think a lot of times, uh, what I have noticed is that fortunately now everybody has one of these and this is their paper. So they come with the information at hand, whether it's by a laptop or their phone. I mean, you wanted to do a few of them, but I would not, definitely would not do a bunch of them.
So maybe putting it up on the screen, that if you want to see the details on this, go to this website. If they have it.
Great, perfect.
I was just going to suggest, or post it on the door or the entryway, one posting of it. They can glance at it and see what it is.
And they can go to.
And take a screenshot with that.
Yeah.
And, because they don't want paper.
Like a restaurant menu.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Great.
Really quick, do we have consensus?
Can you live with that?
Is he right there?
So, Ms., yeah, go ahead.
For Susan and Mary, what is the, what is the consensus on?
The consensus would be to post electronically on the screen or whatever. So as people are coming in, they do see that if you want to follow through with this, you can go to this site. And, and, uh, you know, like Ms. Jordan was saying, they have their phone, they can pull it up and see if they want it.
So posted electronically where?
On our screen.
On the screen, we have two screens.
It's going to go away, because if we have, it's going to have to go away.
No, because we don't have anything during board meetings, what we have up there.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, you're voting on board.
Yeah.
No, okay.
So may I jump in because I also heard another thought and I just, I'm like Mr. Dodik, I'm trying to get this captured. Um, the other, uh, idea, which may be a concurrent idea, was to have one copy posted at the entrance to address the issue of, that go, perhaps goes away. So, other comments, other questions, I'm not sure we heard from absolutely everybody.
Well, just perhaps as part of your board comments, I know, um, Ms. Morgan added the description or the explanation that we get our materials, you know, far ahead of time and we have read them and we have an opportunity, you know, that whole preamble that she reads. Perhaps you could.
To add that to.
Urge people to go to the front, take a picture with their phone and go to the website from there. Have the website posted on that agenda that's posted out front.
So the website, in addition to the menu, the one copy, okay.
And we can add that to the, um, the script.
Sure.
Okay, all right, any other discussion from the board? Ms. Gittens, I think we should, maybe we'll call for consensus at this point.
Oh, of course, okay.
The website as well as the, uh, posting of one agenda item. So love it, can live with it or absolutely not. There we go, we have it.
We're so good. Okay, uh, da, 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 that covers that one, that covers that one. And we do, we have board docs up on the screen the whole time, on the two screens.
Yes, correct. There's usually a picture of the, um, the word of the month when that's up there.
Or art.
Sometimes.
Or art or something. Because my, my suggestion is to have, um, as we all are going out to schools and doing different things, to maybe take some pictures and have, alternate with some of those pictures, things, to maybe take some pictures and have, alternate with some of those pictures, not changing them during the meeting, but, you know, they can select a picture to have up on the screen of children of something that's actually going on. So, I mean, that was my thought, to kind of, and also to remind us why we're here. So, the, the suggestion basically is to have pictures of some of our activities at some of schools, some of the things we've done, but just to have them posted.
And that would be going during the meeting, or that would be prior to the meeting, or both?
Both, I guess.
So on our website, we have the quick hits and all of the pictures that are taken daily at schools. And, and those are all good candid shots, but I don't know that it wouldn't be disruptive to the other, the voting and the other.
Well, not to move them, but in, you know, just.
Like a back.
Like a backdrop. Cause the only thing, only time we really have to look up is, is for the vote.
When you're voting.
And then instead of the.
And then presentations, wouldn't we? Yeah.
I mean, I guess I'm thinking action meetings.
Yeah, cause the audiences, they're looking at the screens. So they're reading what we're seeing, even though we just look up there to see whether it's yes or no. They're looking at what we're seeing.
Okay.
So you're referring to the home, to the home viewer, to the person that's viewing the meeting?
Correct.
Or possibly during comment time.
Okay. During comment time, at the beginning, when they come in and at the end or something?
Well, if at the beginning, you're going to show the screen with the, with the agenda, I guess it could be used possibly as a backdrop. But during, during board member comments, there's generally nothing specific up there, so that would be a time.
And that would be great, cause it would distract us from what we're saying, or distract the public from what we're saying.
Anyway. I, what do we think? Do you wanna rephrase or?
So, Ms. Vaughn, go ahead, please.
Are there legal ramifications? Because we need to be careful about the identity and showing kids faces, that's the only thing I worry about.
If we use the ones that are already on the site.
That we can only, so we can only really use.
I, I believe the individuals, I'm looking over at Jason, cause communications does a lot of this work.
Yeah.
They vet those pictures to make sure that they're right.
And, and so I, I think that, that should be something that we need to keep in mind that, and I know, cause we go out to a lot of schools and we often will take a picture or something, but we have to be careful about that and, and only do the ones that have been vetted where they've signed off.
On the phone.
Yeah, parental consent.
Exactly, exactly.
Correct, okay. So I think what I'm hearing is use of the pictures through quick hits and those that have been approved for use on the website. And we can work with our communications department to come up with what that looks like. So consensus, yes? Can live with it, or absolutely not? We have it. All right. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. The next one is pluses and deltas. When, they always say, don't talk about when I was whatever, but I'm going to this point. When I worked for Bank of America, we consistently did pluses and deltas. We called it went-wells and next times. And it, it kinda softened the blow because, and it's very descriptive, because it says, what went well? What did we do procedurally? Not, was it cold necessarily? Not where, you know, the aesthetic type things, but, and I think, I've taken Cindy's class on, on that several times, so she can know that I graduated with honors with that. But the, to talk about what pluses and deltas or went-wells, next times really mean. What went well as far as our procedures and what we did, and next time, what can we do better? And if we, if we look at it like that, I think it kind of frames it different. Cindy, you wanna go through that?
Oh, sure.
A little bit?
Sure. Generally, when you're looking at a plus delta, the plus stands for positive and delta's the symbol for change. So a lot of times what we find is that people do plus negative, like a plus minus, when really, if you use like a STEM that says for the pluses, things that, one thing that went well today that helped us follow our protocol was. One thing that we learned from today's meeting was, so it really keeps it on, on the plus side is the positive. And on the delta side is, one thing that could be changed for next time is and because. So, and it's very limited to the meeting itself, not what to have for lunch, not, is the room temperature proper or not? But the, the meeting process and what occurred during the meeting. And one of the things that we discussed is the, the accreditation required action around self-evaluation. Basically, a plus delta is a formative self-evaluation. And since the other evaluation is an annual, one time a year, this gives you that, that immediate feedback and helps with that process of what are we going to do next time to make sure that we do follow those protocols that we've put in place.
So it would help us with accreditation to be able to show them that we're doing this on a regular basis?
Right, like a formative.
Yes, it would, yeah, for sure.
And I really like, I want to emphasize something Cindy said, and I think we talked about it earlier as well, that the protocols are the framework we use. So that when we talk about accreditation, we say, yes, we have protocols and this is the formative assessment of our use of protocols or, or the ability to tweak those based on perhaps a theme in our deltas, where we start to see, and that may be some data we use, if we start to see a theme where we may need to go back and adjust our protocols because this part continually doesn't work. So that would be another way to look at it.
Um, how do we, and we voted so many times whether to have pluses and deltas, that I really don't wanna do that. How can we wordsmith this, though, to say going forward, how are we going to do that?
Right now, I believe, I was looking for, I've forgotten the page number, I think it's on fifteen maybe. But right now, there is a piece in here about self-evaluation, and it's, it merely mentions the annual self-evaluation. So we could tweak that, I don't see it. We could tweak that to mention the formative evaluation being the use of the plus delta. And then you can decide if, if the chair leads that, if an external person leads that, how you want to do that. But we could put that into protocol, that that is your formative self-evaluation tool. Yes, ma'am?
One of the huge issues has been transparency and whether these should be recorded or videoed and also the fact that there is, there has been no attendance taken, that the minutes, and I'm putting these in air quotes, are something, I'm sorry, scribbled on a whiteboard, that for the person who in the community wonders, well, what did they do? Or maybe a school board member who had to leave early and wants to see, what did they say? It's, it's, it's pretty meaningless, honestly, to, to look at that. Personally, I don't get anything out of those meetings and.
So what I'm hearing is.
But if we are going to have them, I suggest that we also need to concurrently deal with the issue of transparency. And what we're gonna do, A, have some, we, we're gonna have to have somebody in there taking the minutes to do something more than, than a list scribbled on a whiteboard, and secondly, doing attendance.
So what I'm hearing is that you, that you would like to see it be more structured and that you would like it added to the minutes?
And in a way, when you structure it, then you're losing part of what it's all about. So it's really, personally, I don't, I don't favor them personally, I mean.
Do you have another suggestion as a way to do a less formal and a more frequent self-evaluation?
I, no, except that I think perhaps it would be of us to have more workshops.
Ms. Jordan?
I was just gonna say, I, I find it good because of the fact that, to me, it's a recap of what we just did. And of course, you know, what, what, what could have went better, or what should we do to improve what took place? And everyone is invited to join us for those meetings right after the meeting, so that is announced.
Can, can I make a suggestion then? Cause one thing is the location. When you have to leave the room and go around the corner and down the hall, it makes it difficult. If we could have arranged prior to, that D would be open if we're going to do it there, and, and I'm kinda putting this like emotion in a sense, to do that. And also Cindy, since you're the expert on these anyway, that I would suggest that she leave them, and that way she can kinda keep us going in the right direction with protocol, which, and that'd be up to you if you wanna do that. And then also add whatever we discussed to the minutes. And I don't know.
If I could just intervene?
Right.
It's not part of the regular meeting where the minutes are required by law.
Right.
My understanding, under prior counsel, was that the purpose of this was to review how the day went, the meetings during the day. Therefore, the reason it wasn't initially public is because nothing was going to be discussed that could reasonably be foreseen to come before the board for a vote. When I became board attorney, the board at that time elected to, let's do them publicly, okay? With the same parameters, that what's being talked about there is not required to be advertised because it's not a meeting that is going to be voted on official business of the district. And that is what, is what continued to have happened. So the minutes, that's what provoked me to talk. The meeting is over, you're having an informal discussion about how warm the room was, how comfortable you were with a, with a presentation, those types of things. I'm not weighing in on the efficacy of that at all. In fact, from a school board lawyer's position, the best result would be, we don't have them.
Tell us how you really feel.
That is the pleasure of the board. And I'm here to give you advice, has to go about having it legally. So, that's.
Yep, Mrs. Smith, yes.
Why is it that the last board voted to make it public?
Well, I think there was conversation about things not.
I mean, I know the answer. That's kind of a rhetorical, I'm sorry, it's a rhetorical question. It's because of public pressure. Public pressure came to bear and there, there are still people that, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm gonna vote against it anyway, if it comes, I'm, I'm gonna, my consensus is going to be against it anyway because I don't see the point. I mean, I don't care about discussing, people come in the boardroom and go, oh, it's really cold in here, I'm hot. I mean, that's not self-evaluation. And, and my suggestion would be, if we truly want to be able to put the cards on the table, it's something like this. Something like more frequent workshop meetings that, that are truly effective, at least for me. Maybe that's just my way of dealing with things and I can pretty well watch myself on TV and go, oh, I said that, or, or whatever, and self-evaluate. So I'm, my consensus is gonna be this, and I probably will rarely attend those meetings.
Mrs. Patrica?
I have to express disappointment that you've made your mind up before you've heard from all of the board members, because that really is the purpose of a workshop. I have walked into so many workshops where I thought I had my mind made up on an issue, and then I heard from one of my fellow board members, and I thought, oh my goodness, I hadn't seen it from that perspective. I am so open to your perspective. I'm open to the perspective of every single person on this board, and I, I don't know if it's appropriate at this moment for me to express my disappointment, but I am disappointed that before, everybody at this table has had an opportunity to speak on the issue, that you have, you have expressed that your mind is made up. I would like to say that my perspective is, from a team building perspective, this is very important. And I understand that you guys are sick of the fact that I'm cold, I get it. I told office staff earlier today, I'm not going to be cold anymore. It doesn't do me any good to complain about something I can't change. I, I, I'm just, I'm not gonna complain about it anymore. But, but the example is, it's, it's, it's funny, it's lighthearted. It gives us an opportunity as human beings to interact in an informal setting. And right now, as a new team, I'd like if we could stop referring to each other as the new board members and the more seasoned ones.
Please.
We are a new team.
Please.
And as a new team, these pluses and deltas, or whatever, you're gonna, it's gonna take a long time for me to get used to the new name. These, these post, these informal meetings are a little stiff right now. They are most definitely a little bit stiff right now.
It's cause you're cold.
What?
Sorry.
That was good.
Good time.
I mean, I feel it, I feel a difference, but we don't know each other yet. We will get to the point where we know each other. We will get to the point where we, where we're joking with each other in those meetings and they are productive from the perspective of formative. And, and the only sort of substantive thing I'd like to say regarding your proposal is, is that it be all of the meetings in a day and not just the action meeting. I'd, I'd like us to be able to formatively assess if we have a workshop, a briefing and an action meeting, all of them be included as topics in those.
May I make the clarification too, so we make sure we capture the conversation properly? But did we also hear that, and all kidding aside, you know, we're not talking about room temperature anymore, we're, we're really restricting it to how we operated in accordance with the board protocols? Because if the logic is that this is a formative assessment, then we'd be assessing how we're doing relative to the protocols and not to the temperature in the room or how somebody looked at, you know, the situation. So I, I need to go to Ms. Teague and Ellie and then back because she had her hand up.
Well, my, I, self-evaluation, we're not taking that information later and talking about it again, and looking back at it and looking at that. So if that is in fact data and information that we're gonna use, we need to probably be looking at it more often. Or it needs to come back around to us at some point. And that's never happened.
So are you advocating for that to occur if this moves forward?
If that's what the team decides, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work, I'm gonna do with the team.
Okay.
I'm a team player.
Mrs. Vaughn, yes.
I wanted to respond to what Chris said. This whole discussion is formulated around self-evaluation, is it not? And when you say you're so disappointed in me, I know myself. And if I'm doing self-evaluation for myself and how I've interacted, I can tell you, after nearly seventy-two years on this planet, I know how to evaluate myself. And I know that I am not getting anything out of, out of the meetings. And, you know, I'm sorry you're disappointed, but that's how I am and I'm not likely to change after all these years. And that's just me.
If I could clarify, when we say it's self-evaluation?
You're talking about the board, I know.
It is the team.
I know, the team.
A team evaluation.
Okay, Dr. Atkins?
Just a real quick comment, it doesn't matter to me, pluses and deltas, but I would say that it is an opportunity where I'm able to get feedback on how the presentations went, maybe, you know, actions that I took or how my team did. That, that's been good for us to be able to, to do better job conducting briefing and workshops.
And see, I wasn't even aware, honestly, that it was on anything other than the action meeting. And so that clarification is good for me. Have we heard from everybody? Did everybody weigh in on?
No, Mary.
Nothing to add? Mary?
No, I'll weigh.
No, please, oh, okay.
No, no, because, yeah.
Okay.
The only question is, can we not have to seek consensus at every board meeting? Can we just come to the agreement now that after every action meeting, we will have?
Oh, that's why we have it on here?
Okay, good.
So we don't have to all go, are you going? I don't know, are you going? I'm not going, I, you know? So we'll do it one time here. Okay.
So I think we're ready to call for the questions?
Yeah.
So the question, oh, no, I wanna make sure, are we okay? No, I thought you had a comment, I'm so sorry. So, so the question is, are we ready to proceed with a call for consensus on that we will have a plus delta at the conclusion of the action meetings for the purpose of conducting a formative self, board self-evaluation relative to the protocols?
Can I, maybe one or two things in there?
Please, go ahead, thank you.
That there is nothing that compels a board member to attend?
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
And that there be a consistent person that serves as the charting person or whatever we're calling that person. And I know we already talked about that, but I just want you all to.
Well, and I'd like to have that in there as well. Like I mentioned Cindy doing it. And also have it on record that it's going to be concerning all of the meetings for the day.
Yes.
And the location would be the closest proximity to the boardroom.
Absolutely, and I'm gonna add one little minor caveat, if Cindy, she gets sick sometimes, you know, she's not here, so we would have, or designated, you know, designated.
We get in there sometimes and say, we're just gonna take the.
Right, right, absolutely. I wanna give her that out, just in case she has a personal day or something comes up.
No.
Okay. All right, so with all of that in mind, we're looking for, can love it, can live with it, or absolutely not?
This is the last time that we're voting on this plus and delta sometime.
Consensus, thank you, please.
And in the room in the back, that was, that part. And in the room in the back, that was, that part.
Looking at training D.
Yeah, we said that.
Yeah, with the accordion door open.
Okay, moving on for time's sake, thank you so much. The next thing we're talking about is board advisories. And Cindy, I think you were gonna mention about it not being policy, protocol issues, if you could bring that up for me.
And Mr. Dotig is here for, for reference, but we, earlier we're talking about protocol. And protocol is completely up to the discretion of the board and you can change it at will. Policy, on the other hand, is also partly at, at will, but requires a process that has to come before for a change to policy. And part of policy also is law. So, when it comes to those distinctions, we'll be looking to Mr. Dotig. Thank you.
Mr. Dotig, can I ask, would you just do a brief review for us of what the process is to update policy language, just a quick review?
Oh, sure, okay.
Thank you.
In fact, this subject was the subject of a workshop similar to this, back in August with the old board. And there was language and things discussed then about board policy one point two O. So, the process typically, an issue or a matter is brought to the attention of individuals in various departments that would require the change in language or amend the policy or create a new policy. And the process essentially at that point requires staff to take the time to draft a language that is reviewed by the superintendent and his cabinet and in addition to the school board attorney. And that language is then reviewed by all of you at usually a pre-briefing meeting and then a briefing meeting. And then eventually a public hearing is held to vote, where the public has an opportunity to be heard, to vote on the changes to the policy. And all of that is governed by the Florida Administrative Procedures Act, Chapter one twenty of Florida law. So, this specific policy that governs your board advisory committees to change it, we would have to go through that process. Back in August, it was decided that we would make changes for the nineteen-twenty school year. Well, that hasn't been brought to you all yet because we had a change in a board. So, this issue is now, now back here. And I know at least one board member has emailed the rest of you about some suggestions and I don't know if Ms. Gittens has some suggestions, but.
I do.
We're well into this school year, so I'm at your pleasure to draft language that would satisfy everybody and.
For the nineteen-twenty year.
Sure, and that's the process.
Would you like to go with your?
Everybody's aware of, I mean, are there questions you wanna discuss? Did everybody have a chance to read?
And just for point of review, maybe I'll, I'll read the proposal, not the entire email, but there were, there was proposal one and two. Proposal one was, I propose that we direct Dr. Atkins to work with staff in the areas of academic services, operations, and finance to propose a list of qualifications for the committees related to those three areas for review and approval by the board. And then this would also require the board to direct Attorney Rob Dotig to draft an amendment to the policy as Rob just outlined. So, that is proposal one on the table, so conversation, discussion.
What I got from what you had sent is basically saying, for example, finance, that they would have to have a certain amount of experience credentials in finance in order to be on the committee. I'm really on the fence because I don't, I, I'm, I'm really concerned with excluding people that may not have, you know, diploma up on the wall, but that have the experience, knowledge, or whatever to be a viable part of that committee.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, my emails clearly stated that this is not a degree requirement. This is, this is, we, we turn to the professionals in these specific areas and we say, you know, who, what kinds of qualifications are necessary? If you look at the Palm Beach example that I provided, for example, I believe two tradesmen are required on their list. And tradesmen don't necessarily have to have a, any kind of education, it's, it's an experience issue. So, so could we have, you know, a small business owner who doesn't have a college degree but has a high degree of knowledge in finance and the bidding process and all of that be part of finance advisory? Absolutely, I would turn to Mr. Blerton and his staff for guidance on what do you, what kinds of experience do you think are most helpful in moving this district forward? I did not put this part in the email because it was public record and I didn't know if it would be taken the wrong way. But I feel like to a certain extent, we're experiencing growing pains. We, we've gone from being sort of a medium-sized district where we're on the cusp of, of being truly a mega district. And I feel like we need to grow up. And part of that growing up is leveraging the expertise in the community. And if, and if we don't sort of raise the level of expectations for these communities that, that do require, I mean, they require a high degree of, of professional knowledge and experience, I would be useless on construction advisory, I would be useless on curriculum, and I'm a teacher, you know? So, so what, Dr. Creel, what would be helpful to you in terms of making recommendations, reviewing what we're doing, making recommendations for best practices so that, so that we can move forward? Does, does that make sense? It's not about excluding, continuous improvement, open to everybody. DAC, I think DAC is such a wonderful opportunity for absolutely anybody in the community to get involved. There, there are other committees where we wouldn't have any kinds of requirements and we're not excluding anybody. Does that make sense? So, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, other comments, other questions?
So, so when you're talking about having these requirements for the members, are we talking about all the members or so many of the members?
Yeah, I think the Palm Beach example had two, two open seats. So, no requirements at all for two of the members on, on that committee. And that was four, four open seats, my bad. And again, you know, we, I turned to Dr. Atkins, turned to Attorney Dotig and, and asked, what's your recommendation in that regard? And there would be some open positions.
What, what was the size of the board?
It was similar to what we already have, yes. It was similar to what we already have.
With four open?
Yeah, there's fourteen.
There's fourteen and four would be general?
Anyone who's interested.
What Ms. Patrica attached has fourteen members, four community representatives at large. And the rest have, for instance, this is their construction committee. An architect, an engineer, lander, community planner, an attorney that does construction, real estate law, management, information systems, professional, construction project man, and those types of things.
Other questions, other comments?
Yeah, personally, I think it's very helpful to have professionals as long as we keep open seats as well. I mean, that seems reasonable.
Mrs. Giavelli?
So, we're just adding to what we presently have is what the recommendation is, is that my understanding?
We're tweaking it.
I think it's being tweaked a little bit from what I'm understanding.
So, then that's my, that leads me to my question, then, who, how would the selection process be? Who would make those determinations? Who would pick those, the liaison of the, of that, of that committee? Or would it go back to the superintendent? Like, so we're, technically, these are, except for the oversight committee, we're, that's selected by us. So, I don't wanna give up my two seats, you know? So, I'm, just, that's why I'm saying, do we add to it to round it out? But, I, 'cause I believe that everyone has, can, can contribute to each of these regardless of their, if they have the passion to serve for our children and they have the passion, they have the ability to be there, that's the criteria for me, so.
Okay, other discussion?
I, I think that there's a, a way for us to do this, that board members are still choosing from that list, is that not true in Palm Beach?
Yeah, in Palm Beach, it's, it shall consist of fourteen members appointed by the school board, two appointees per board member.
Right.
So, you're not, no one's taking anything away, unfortunately, it's gonna mean, Mary, please don't hate me, changing the application for those three specific committees to include, you know, proof of those qualifications, I would assume. And it, and it might, there might be more duplication than usual, like I might choose the same two architects that Ms. Fisher chooses or, or something like that. It's gonna require a bit more work on our part, no doubt.
And then, with, in that in mind, of requiring, requiring more work, perhaps we could have a, once those departments have come up with those best practices is what we should look for? Perhaps they could brief us and say, you know, when you're looking for someone to work on this committee, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
That's absolutely what I envision.
So, what I'm hearing is that there is, we, we have expressed some feeling about having a few open seats. We understand that there are some qualifications that may be beneficial. We wanna make sure we're still keeping things open enough so there are the average person that has the opportunity to apply, but yet also understanding that some qualifications would, would help us move forward.
Yeah, and I, I can go with that. We just need to, as we develop these new applications, we have to have a carefully crafted statement that shows everybody that it's our, you know, that, that we're not excluding any, I mean.
What the intention is, right, what the intention is?
Exactly, what the intention is and that it's open for everybody to apply to, however, I mean, a very carefully crafted statement so that people don't get the wrong idea. I think that's gonna be important too.
Yep, thank you very much.
And before we do that, I think what I wanted to bring in to the conversation may have a bearing on it as well. I did review all of the committees, all of the members on the advisory boards. And I was a little concerned at the makeup. I know there's movement when there's movement with board members. But, for example, on construct, was it Finance Committee? And I looked at, and that's why I gave it to everybody to do on your own. I looked at Finance Committee and I looked at the people that were joined to my district, which is District Five. And I checked their locations and addresses and none of them are in my district. And I, that was a real concern to me because, you know, we're a large district and we don't have representation. I know that as people move off and things, you know, okay, well, we'll make that when someone moves off, that's not okay for me. I don't, I don't wanna see six months go by till the end of the year when someone's term is up for District Five to be represented. So, I don't know, and a suggestion might be that in the interim of trying to get it to where it should be, that we may have more than fourteen. That those, the representatives from the districts that are not represented would be almost immediately allowed to come to the meetings and be, and participate as well. Otherwise, you're excluding a whole section of people.
Okay, so let me make sure I hear, I understand. So, 'cause I hear two things on the table, so I wanna make sure we're clear. So, in the interim, prior to staff doing the work that we've talked about, where we would bring back qualifications in a, in a process, so to speak, relative to these, those three committees, or you're also asking, or entertaining the idea to talk with the board about in the interim, prior to that happening, us bringing this back, we would ask for an examination of each committee to ensure that there's district representation?
Yes, and I would like to, Susan, don't shoot me, okay? Or Mary, I would just like to, to have the lists reviewed.
Okay, yes.
And to see and checking your dresses and locations, if it says four, if it says five, is that person actually in that location?
So, to ensure the district representation, we would review staff, all of us would review the list to ensure, and then we could report that back to you and you can make some decisions based at that time.
Right, as per your district.
So, then I think, over the years, one of the issues has been that we, we get applications that we get. And so, there may be a deficiency in applications in certain districts. Simply, I don't know, you know, because we put out the advertisement and the application to try to reach as many people as we can. So, maybe if we could workshop this issue before we come to conclusion about, about the requirements and the membership that, you know, then maybe we could just talk about it then and, and look at ways to maybe get out there a little bit more.
Well, okay, and I, I understand what you're saying about you, and you put it out and nobody responds. But if it, if it's District Five and you say, look, we put out and nobody from District Five gave an application, then give me the opportunity as a representative from District Five to come back to you and say, I can't find anybody. But put that onus on me and give me a period of time to get out into the community and say, look, if we're gonna be represented, you gotta show up.
Yeah, 'cause as the years go, as the year goes on, we do lose people. And then sometimes if I have a vacancy, there may not be anybody from my district applying, so I get to pick someone else.
The conversation that's missing is that conversation, yes. But the conversation that's missing would be me coming to you and saying, Mary, you have a, a spot open, do you have anybody? And if not, to give you that opportunity.
Yeah, Mary does that, she, that's what she does.
I was gonna say, I don't know what we're talking about, I'm sorry. What are we talking about?
Okay, so let me see if I can clarify.
We're just talking about the applications and then filling vacancies during the year.
I think the prob, the problem is that you might not get applications from, from Lehigh, for instance. And so, how do you fulfill this geographic requirement if there is going to be one? I think that's what Ms. Fisher's, I'm not trying to reinforce.
Right, and it becomes the, the, on the onus of that person in that district to say, no, I can't find anyone.
So, here, may I throw something in just as facilitator note for a moment? If the desire of the board is to, A, if I'm hearing you correctly, you'd like for staff to bring back a recommendation relative to qualifications, relative to district representation, we can work on the language offline and bring that back to you in a proposal. That's why we're listening very intently, Cindy's rapidly taking notes on what you're saying so we can make sure that we are including the conversation and the variables you're speaking about. So, for example, with district representation, Ms. Patrica, Mrs. Gittens had examined one of our committees and discovered that her district was not represented. So, she was asking if it's possible, if there could be that courtesy extended to her to say, you know, Mrs. Gittens, there is nobody in the pool. We missed, we, we've lost three people, there is nobody in the pool from District Five, we have no representation from District Five. Would you be willing to go out and ask for some folks to apply? If the answer's no, then we're done.
But doesn't that already happen, like, for instance, based on an absence at last night's fact, an appointment is coming up for you on finance advisory in your district? So, isn't the process already that, Mary, sorry, Ms. Reader? She, she will go to Madam Chair and, and tell her that there's an opening and, and please find someone to replace her. And if you go through the list of applications that are already there, I, I, like, if I were you, what I do is I search for a sterile and then I search for Benita and then I, you know, I search for my areas. And if I can't find anybody there, it's either incumbent upon me to go get somebody or look at the other applications and decide, oh, that person's really qualified and I put them there. Like, I'm not, I just don't understand what you're asking for that's different.
I think what happened when I looked at it face value and saw that there's no one from my district, it was just hard for me to wrap my head around. Even with all the movement and not finding an application, that in an area as large as that, that there is no one from that area that would stand up to say they wanted to be, that's what was just difficult for me.
Okay, so of the existing committees, we can do that examination. If we determine there's nobody, then we can bring that back as, as some thoughts. Like, in these committees, we do not have representation in these areas, and surface that for you, is that the request?
That is the request, and then I have a little bit more to add to. It becomes a, a little difficult when we talk about the diversity of these advisory committees. And I don't mean diversity by one thing, diversity by gender, by race, by the number of district employees. We've heard over and over a lot of times that there, we have a plethora of district employees. And in, in the way I have understood it, that when the district makes decisions on things and they get thoughts from the public, the public is their advisory boards. And if that's correct, then we need to make sure that that diversity, as hard as it may be, to have the gender, to have the race, to have the district and non-district. And in other words, just a little more vetting to make sure it's right.
Yes, Mrs. Vaughn?
Are you done with that thought? 'Cause I, I, while we're, while we're tweaking this, I know we have, we've, we've said for the tax oversight committee that they cannot be on another committee, right? Okay, what about on this? Now, I haven't gone through the list, I, I know at least one person that's on two different boards. Might it be something that would be interesting to other board members to say, you can only serve on one board at a time?
All right, thoughts on that? Other conversations?
Is it?
Our policy for advisory committees doesn't prohibit that, so.
It doesn't prohibit it, but that's what I'm wondering to share, share the wealth, so to speak, that, that we say, one person, you know, one committee at a time. And we've done that with the tax oversight, so we've already have that as a.
So, that could become the norm for the balance of the committees?
The norm for these advisory committees, I was wondering how people felt about that.
All right, board members, there's a question before you. How do you feel about the one committee only service?
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, anybody objecting?
So I just want to say this, and then this is not about new or old. But in the eight plus years that I've been on the board and served on many of the advisory committees. One thing that has been a challenge has been attendance. And I think it's getting a little bit better now. But so I, here's how, my feeling is, if, if I know a community member who really has an interest in. The education and the economic condition of this community. And they want to volunteer their time and serve on two committees, I hate to say, no, you can't do that. You can only be on one committee. Because, I mean, just think about, you know, how that might. Make them feel and what the perception might be. So, and I don't think we have that many people. Who want to serve on more than one, but there are some people who have a real interest. And who are very, very instrumental in helping things happen for our schools, so.
All right, other conversations. Ms. Patriona?
And I kind of piggyback off of what Mary's saying, because I personally know, been in. One, the person that has, that's dual and that's on two committees, and he's doing a wonderful job. So I, I would not want to replace him. So, I mean, I would, I wouldn't be want, the one that wants to ask him to step down. And then back, I, I, somebody mentioned, I think it was Mary, to workshop this later. Because I have asked about videotaping the advisories. And I know they're still working on that and to, so I, I'm gonna bring that back around.
I have information to provide you too, because you asked me to.
Okay.
I don't have it here today, though. What districts do and what districts don't.
Right, so that.
I didn't know that was going to come up to them.
Well, since we're talking about that, I mean, that, that was, you know, I, I believe in the, I'm back in the spirit of transparency. I think that others that can't attend these meetings, these advisory meetings, they can go and watch them. I, you know, I, they're not going to order the, the recording. And I think watching them gives, especially, I know the Oversight Committee, that was what made, kind of jarred this whole thing for me. Because the Oversight Committee is being recorded, and so I don't, I don't see that one committee is more important than another. That why we wouldn't do that across the board.
Right, district advisories as well.
Yeah.
We're on, we're on live stream, yes.
So, yes.
So other thoughts on videotaping, streaming?
I'm going to, for time, say we need to wrap this up in about the next minute.
Okay.
So that we can move on.
I, I need an answer to a question. If I'm going to work with staff to develop something to bring back to a workshop.
Right.
Ms. Patrica mentioned the three committees, Construction, Curriculum, and Finance. As the three that might require some level of qualification. Is that what?
We're working, I know, we're looking on consensus for that, yes, okay. So our proposal would be to bring that back to you for your consideration. Any, let's just do consensus on that. So qualifications, race, gender, all of that that we talked about. All right, so we are clear on that.
Thank you.
Do we need direction on the videotaping, or do we want to get information on the number of districts that do it and don't? And bring that back as well as part of that presentation?
I can put language in the policy, in the draft, you know, we're gonna draft the policy and bring it back here and we'll talk about it.
All right, sounds good. Just wanted to see if we need a direction on that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else that we need to talk about today?
I think that that's fine, and we will move on to our last topic.
Thank you all.
And it is on oversight, and I will turn it over to Ms. Fisher.
So the, the two previous conversations, including the one on the indoor air quality. Kind of illustrates why I asked for this workshop opportunity. To come together as a board and make sure that we all have the same information. On page twelve, I think it is, are the, is the school board philosophy, School Board Policy 1.06. Which kind of talks about our, part of, of how we implement our oversight. And so recently, there have been many rumors.
Page twelve of what?
Pardon me?
Board protocols.
Oh, 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 oh. Oh, I'm sorry, page twelve of, of the protocols. I had those up. You know, leading with vision by keeping the focus on the future rather than the past or the present. Encourage and listen for, listen for diversity and views of all the community, et cetera, et cetera. Make decisions collectively rather than individually and govern proactively rather than reactively. So in the last couple of months, I think there have been a lot of rumors, a lot of people putting things on social media. And there's been a lot of scuttlebutt in the community regarding the condition of, of the board. In its revised form, and we do have sort of a new board at least every two years. So change is constant and inevitable with us, and, and it does take a period of adjustment. And there's also been some talk about the confidence of the board in the superintendent. And so, you know, the, even the. The, the seemingly lack of awareness in the fact that the self-evaluation was not. Me evaluating myself or you evaluating yourself, but the board evaluating ourselves as a team. So I think that that's a piece that, in my opinion, kind of was missing. And, and it takes work. It, it takes a lot of cooperation. It takes give and take. And it takes being willing to put your own baggage outside the door and come in with the focus on what our purpose is. And that is improve student achievement. So that's why I wanted to talk about this. And, and, and I sent you the memo, and I'm just going to read a little bit of it. But, you know, we need to have a clear understanding of our duties and powers that are imposed by statute. Each and every one of us on this board is an elected constitutional official. And I think that we all reserve, we deserve the same respect, the same consideration, and the same amount of information. And, and that is very important for us to be able to work as a team and do the job that we are, plus elected to do. So, I was looking back, and we, in the last several years, have had many accomplishments. And there are a lot of things that some of the more recently elected members are asking. Like the whole thing with the procurement and everything. And so I, you know, I kind of know about that because I've worked through it. I sat and listened probably for the first year of my first term so that I could understand what was really going on. This is a huge district. We're focused on this, on the student achievement. We're focused on our schools. The community is concerned about our schools. We, we depend on our employees to take care of the children in the schools. And to do all the other ancillary things that are happening. I, I have come to develop trust in the fact that the people that are employed in Lee County Schools. Are transparent, are honest, are doing a good job. And, and that opinion has come to me over the past several years, observing the work they do. Asking questions and getting detailed explanations. Sometimes I didn't even understand it all, because, you know, you guys know I'm the mental health and people person. And the finance and that kind of thing is a challenge for me, and I really have to pay attention to some of my colleagues who are more expert in that. Feel to know what questions to ask and to really be able to delve into that. So I, you know, I'd like to say that I think it's a really good idea sometimes to test the water before you jump in. So one time I went to Mexico and there was a pool there and it was very hot. And I thought, you know, I'm just going to put my feet in there because it's really hot. Well, I stepped into it and down I went. It was about fifteen feet deep. So I don't want for you guys to get that feeling, because it was kind of hard getting back up there and catching my breath. So, that being said, we have, you know, passed the sales tax. We've signed a historic document with the NAACP. We've been accredited. We've become the master board more than once over the years. And so we have also, under Dr. Atkins' tenure. Improved our relationships with our business community through the Business Roundtable. And through really allowing some of our local community people to come in and give us suggestions, and they've been beneficial. And I think that we've opened the door and really become a, a better working part of the community. And I think that we want to maintain some of those wins and successes as we go on. You know, we had a, I don't know how many were, were our DA schools at one time.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, down to one. That was a huge accomplishment, because we have a challenging mobile community. And our, the population of our student body has changed dramatically. We have so many more kids with special needs, so many more kids from all over the world. Who have not only language but cultural differences. So I think that the work that's being done is tremendous every day. I've had people come and complain, and I, I'll say to them, pick any school in the district and go and visit, stay there for three hours. And then tell me what your complaint really is. When people do it and they come back, they say, wow, I had no idea. That that's what was going on in your schools. So I think that it's our job. To represent the community and to support the work that the people who work for Lee County School District are doing. All that being said, there are a lot of areas of concern, which have been voiced out in the community, on social media, et cetera. And Dr. Atkins and I have talked about this. So losing a number of key staff has not been a, a good PR thing. Having people say that they're concerned about their work environment and that they're trying to retire early. We, we want to retain, we want to recruit and retain people. We have an unprecedented number of second career people teaching in our classrooms now. Because there's a nationwide shortage of teaching. You know, the recent executive pay raises has raised a lot of concern in the community. So with that being said, I think we need to look at what's being said. Is it a fact or is it an opinion? I think that we need to discern what that is. And then we as a board need to work together to try to help devise a plan. How are we going to fix this? Is the superintendent going to have an opportunity to work on things that we specifically, as a group. Give him to do? We, we might want to identify, you know, we need to improve this, this, and this. And we need it done in six months. Is that what we're going to do or are we going to do something else? But I'm, as a forty-year member of this community, I'm distressed to hear. A lot, you know, a lot of what's been said. And I think that the bottom line for us is that we need to come together. I think we have too many personal agendas here. I think we have some misunderstandings about what it is that we're supposed to do and, and how much power do we have? No power, ladies, unless we're together. So I think I, I wanted to just preface by saying that and then see what you think. And also in the protocols, one of the first things that I learned in, at FSBA is on page sixteen. And it's the chart with, this is what the school board does and this is what the superintendent does. And I see time after time after time, school board members getting in the weeds. And doing the job of the superintendent and the superintendent's staff. So I think that that needs to be revisited and, and reexamined. So that everybody can clearly understand what it is that we're supposed to do. And let's get together and get it done, because we've got work to do. This is a big district. So, comments?
Yes, okay, so along the same line, I've been thinking a lot about the way communication has transpired the last couple of days. So this is, these are my thoughts. One of the prices of sunshine is the inability of new and sitting board members. To communicate with one another on an informal basis, to learn what is most important to each one. To understand the passion and issues that brought them to stand for election. To understand their expectations of and for the team, their preferences for a way, way of work and team communication. When elected, new board members feel responsibility to the public and are driven by a desire to make change. That they believe is in the best interest of the district and its children. And I think you can all agree with that. So do sitting board members. The challenge is to find a way of work that brings both to a place. Where each board member can say that he or she respects and trusts all the members of the governance team, just what you said. Consequently, in my experience, six years on the board, the election of a new school board member usually leads to fits and starts in the board's work style. But over time, it roughs its way out toward a new working culture and way of work. Three years ago, we had few workshops. Our work was primarily done in briefings. Look at board meetings when board members, Patrica and Giavanelle, joined the team two years ago. We went through a rocky period. You know. I know, absolutely.
I know, I was there.
Yes, you were. The new board, the new board struggled to get along personally, and, and that interfered with our ability to, to develop trust and respect for one another. As we attempted to try to tackle some of these big issues facing the district. It took hard work on these issues, and sometimes with professional facilitators, to get to the place where our work. Was respected and trusted by the community. So over time, we came to realize that we worked best as a team when we had the opportunity. Opportunity to talk to one another with staff in a less formal setting that encouraged the exchange of ideas. So workshops became our productive way of life. I expected our way of work to change with this new board, despite what many, some of you seem to think. Change is inevitable with a new mix of temperaments and skill sets. I expected it to evolve from the culture and way of work of the previous board. As new ways were brought forward by the new members for discussion and implementation, or to be discarded. I hoped new board members would not seek to preemptively and unilaterally impose a new order. But would bring their experience and skills in the teamwork, in teamwork to the table as we hammered our way to a new governance team. Frankly, that is why I have pushed so hard, but perhaps not gently enough. What is the expression? Push?
Leadership is pushing, gentle pressure applied relentlessly.
Relentlessly, okay. Perhaps not gently enough for professional board development around matters like communication. Both within the, and our communication, both within the governance team and between the government, governance team, team and the community. My hope from this meeting today mirrors exactly what Ms. Fisher has said. We put our individual issues on the table, educate one another, deliberate, negotiate our way to priorities as a board. That we adopt the Covey Strategy, seek to learn, to understand, then to communicate and educate. I hope the community will see, and I believe we all are, critical thinkers, problem solvers, team players. Eager to communicate with one another and our constituents and stakeholders. I hope that they will see that we are seeking to find our balance, to build a common foundation. From which we can professionally and judiciously respond to the many importantly difficult challenges facing the school district. So I, I, I felt the need to say that because some of my, there have been attributions about my, my comments and behavior. And, and public that I, I think needed to be addressed, and so I just thought it was important that I tell you as a board member. Where I was coming from when we all sat down the first time at the table. And I absolutely believe that we will find ourselves laughing at ourselves two years from now, just as. Is Steve here? Uh, Steve, there he is. Steve, yeah, so just as, you know, we all left in November, you know, a team. And so that's my fervent hope, that's my expectation. I just wanted to clarify where I'm coming from so that there's no misunderstanding. So, any other comments?
I do. I think, did you have a comment first or do you want me to go ahead?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Because of sunshine law, we are prohibited from. Me walking into your office and saying, Kathleen, why did you write something like that? My answer to the email that you sent out, and I said I was very disheartened and I was very disappointed. I am a collaborator. I came on this board and I know some of you, have known some of you, have worked with some of you. But for many, many, many days, I sat in the back of that boardroom and watched, not. But for many, many, many days, I sat in the back of that boardroom and watched not just the last board, but boards before that and before that. I have.
You need a hobby.
I know that. I got one now. I have, when people ask me why I was doing this, and I said so that I could bring empathy where there is sympathy. I have walked down that aisle and come up to that microphone to ask a question or to make a statement that I felt would be beneficial to not only my small community but the community as a whole. To only hear as I turned to leave, the next item on the agenda is. One of my goals is never to have anyone feel the way that felt dismissed. Some of the things that have happened to me that I have not made public since I have been on this board, I have sucked up, I have smiled through them because I'm not going to let anybody see me sweated. Whether it, you understand how it feels? That's my empathy, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. It's different sitting on this side, and I say that to the people that elected me to put me here. It is different sitting here. You have board members saying, oh, but it's a lot different when you're up there. It is different because you do see more. Sometimes that's good, sometimes that's bad. I have, I've had one thing that happened so far that I felt I owed the public a, an apology. When the executive salaries were done at the end of December, and you're all recording me so it's out there, yes, I did know about it. I felt at the end of that meeting, when we walked away, I should have addressed the elephant in the room. If it's something that is concerning the public, my public, my community, I should have addressed it in some way. And I didn't, and I apologize for that. It was very concerning to me for things like that to happen. And I've talked to the superintendent about it. It's like a perfect storm in the sense that November, we, you know, get a six percent increase. The next month, then we give an increase of that magnitude to chiefs and directors. I got a multitude of calls. I was stopped everywhere I went. I got emails. It was not just one dissenting person that said it. There were teachers that were very concerned. Teachers that were saying, maybe I can leave earlier and retire sooner. When we had the discussion, I think it was December sixth, about the budget and with Angela and the superintendent. And I asked the question when they showed me the plan for bringing everyone up to the market rate. And you'll recall, my question was, and we will take care of the teachers and the lower people first, will we not? And the answer was, we're still in negotiation. I thought, okay, so it's all in the process. I was very, very surprised to wake up one morning to be told and to be called by people that were getting the raise that didn't even know that they were getting it. This is a major issue to me because when we talk about transparency, that's what I said I was going to do. I am not going to change who I am to sit on this board. So if it means saying the hard things to be transparent, that's what I will do. I asked for information when I first saw the plan for the market. And I asked the question, this is great, how are we going to pay for it? And I was told that we found twenty-two million dollars. That was a concern to me. How can you say you find twenty-two million dollars?
Can I correct, make it?
Angela's sitting right there, that was what she said, we found twenty-two million dollars.
Well, as we talked about, when I showed you the documents that were related to our negotiations. Our negotiations here, we're working toward multi-year contracts, two-year contracts. So the dollars available and approved for this year's budget are significantly less than the dollars that we are working toward freeing up for next year's budget. So when the comment is made that we found the money, it's not like the money was lost. The money is coming from literally months of hard budget work to where we are looking at not only every single department within our central office, but we're also looking at schools. We're looking at things like the carryover budget, which is significant both at schools and also at the district office. And we think, we know at this point, that we can become, as an organization, even more efficient by producing these budgets in some areas where money just continues to stay in the bank, so to speak, year after year. But also become more efficient in terms of how we staff and looking at our staffing ratios. And then take those dollars and put them into, you know, the pockets of our employees so that we can improve our retention. Because recruiting has always been a struggle in this district. And so when, if the word "found the money" made it seem as if the money was lost, but it's not at all. The money is due to very, very difficult conversations and diving in deep into the budget like we'd never done in the school district. A lot of the time in the school district, it was always when we'd do budgets, it was, you know, just, we want, you know, if I was a department director, I look at my budget, I need a little bit more money, so I'm going to ask for a slight increase. And then there's the debate over that, whether I get it or not. We didn't look as in-depth at strategically budgeting so that if we, we can get more efficient here and do less here so that we can do more toward our strategic priorities. So one of our strategic priorities is about recruitment and retention of personnel. And our endeavor here is to try to increase the staffing, the compensation for staff at all levels. We started way back with teachers, two or three years ago. And we've been able to get the teachers up to the fifty-fifth percentile. We've got support staff up higher. It's not to the fifty-fifth percentile, but they're a little bit less, actually I have the numbers here. But the lowest at this time was the chiefs or the executives. And that's why we, we had actually had that in the budget FY eighteen. We had it in the budget again FY nineteen. And the decision was made, you know, back in March when this was approved, that it would be implemented later on in the fall, which is what I did. I think my communication failure, which I apologize to the board for, is particularly those of you that didn't have that past history. Because those of you that had the history, we talked about this strategically back in the spring.
And I, and let me just pause you right there. We had that conversation that the previous board had passed this in March but had decided not to do it until later. That's another conversation. My, my concern at that time was where, and where would we get the money to do that then? And I think I voiced to you as well, in our first meeting, I said, we need to take care of the teachers and the support staff first. And I even said in a meeting with you and Angela that, you know, if you had taken care of the teachers first and the support staff after the negotiations were done, this wouldn't have been as a major of an issue. But when you have people out there, and this is where my empathy comes in, working two and three jobs and just before Christmas, someone making six figures gets a fifteen to twenty percent increase and they can't even find the money to carry them through the two-week break. It's, and I told you this, it's the aesthetics, it's how it looks. If, if it looks like that to the, to the overall public, then we're not doing what we're supposed to do. To the teachers that are out there in the trenches, and I said this as well, if you, you know, and I know we were trying to keep the people at the top that are, you know, in the lowest realm. But if we don't have teachers, we don't need them. We don't need to give them an increase, we don't need to give them anything because we won't have people to run our schools. And with all of the work and the stress and everything that's on our teachers right now and our support staff, to them and to the ones that have spoken to me, it was a slap in the face.
Madam Chair, may I, please. Don't we have a workshop scheduled on this specific subject?
Yes.
May, in the interest of time, can we address this at that workshop and stay focused on?
Okay.
On, I'm sorry, but you know that I have childcare issues and I have to walk out the door in three minutes.
I understand that you have to go.
We're already forty-five minutes over.
Okay.
I know you are.
And not all of us have had an opportunity to speak.
Well.
Right, so then, I just want to bring something else back into light that I said before. I did a little bit of research on job satisfaction factors because a lot, a lot of the reports have been about working conditions and about trouble developing in there, even though there's a career ladder, for people to be allowed the opportunity to show their stuff and grow. And I think that succession planning in, from the top on down is another critical thing that hasn't really formulated. And I think that we have a lot of untapped talent and excellence right within our own ranks. And we just heard a story this morning about a custodian who's doing work at night and going to school during the day. And so I think we have a lot of that potential that, and I've mentioned it many times over the years. But as I looked at a couple of surveys, the top ten job satisfaction factors, and I know we're looking at money and getting to market rate, but appreciation, relationships, learning and career development were ahead of attractive fixed salary, which was number eight out of ten on one list. And then opportunities to use skills and abilities, management recognition of employee successes, job-specific training, feeling safe and appreciated in the work environment, all came before number five, which was compensation and pay. So I think that we need to take a look at, yes, our budget is important, yes, our, you know, our facilities are important. But I think that our main treasure is our people, our students and our staff.
Yes.
And so I think we really need to bring some of that back into focus and figure out how it is that we can help them to feel like, you know, I really want to go to work on Monday morning, not like I'm dreading it and I wish I could do something else, but I need to pay my mortgage. So I think those are the kinds of things that needed to be brought out on the table and so that we can, as a group and the people who are responsible to the community, to balance that out and make sure that the attention is given in both lanes so that we can help our people.
Can I suggest, since Chris has to leave, would you like to give your comments?
I'm not going to leave until this meeting's over, so I'd rather wait, if I may.
So if anybody else has any other comments, then before we close, I don't want to.
Well, I feel like the elephant in the room should be addressed. And I want to go on record as saying, Dr. Atkins, you have my full support. You are the only person to lead this district at this moment in time. I've enjoyed working with you tremendously. I've also been impressed by the achievements that you've accomplished. And, you know, I'll point out specific ones and you'll give credit to others, but you're the leader and it's on you. The good and the bad is on you. And I think that we, as a board, you know, I look at everything that's happened over the past week and at first I felt like I was living in the Twilight Zone, like what is going on? Like I had no idea what was going on, and then I realized it's our fault as a board, it's our fault. We have not taken the time to sit down and talk to each other and get to know each other and engage in team building. And, and I'm going to pick on you because I know, because we get along really well, I'm going to pick on you. Ms. Gittens comes on the board and she doesn't trust me because of things she heard about me while she was on the campaign trail. And she comes on the board and I don't trust her because of things people have been whispering in my ear about her before she came on to the board. And you know what? It doesn't matter. It does not matter. We are a team. And we have got to find a way to get along because there are, according to Mr. Mora, eighty-two thousand plus students that are relying on these seven women to put on our big girl pants and figure it out. You've heard me say before, there's no crying in baseball, there's no crying in school boards. You know, I mean, let's figure this out, ladies.
We're in trouble.
There are real substantive issues that I'm dying to get back to. I really want to have substantive conversations with this board. I don't want us to be fighting in emails. I don't want us to be approaching each other with preconceived notions about motivations and your tone of voice hurt my feelings and, well, what you wrote in that email hurt my feelings. I really don't care. How does that impact children? How does the behavior of this board over the past week impact the staff, which has a direct impact on children? We're not, we, the seven of us are not doing our jobs. The superintendent is fine, his staff is fine. Ask questions, gather information, but we've been elected to do a job and we're not doing it.
Right. Thank you. You're here.
Sorry. And my daughter needs a ride home from swim practice.
I just, I just.
I have comments.
I'm Betsy.
Oh, okay. First of all, two things. First of all, one thing that we haven't addressed is what I call the conversation, the information loop. And since I've come on the board, and I've addressed this to Dr. Atkins and mentioned it to Mr. Doty, I've really had to fight hard to get the information that some others are privy to. One good example is it took me almost two months to get on the list of the incident report, which I feel is very, very important for a school board member to know in case a constituent asks about that. And when I asked about that, I was met with blank, like, oh, I'm not sure what you're talking about. And, and there are other things where there are obviously some members that are privy to things that other members are not privy to, and that's not right, okay? So that's one huge thing. Now, Ms. Morgan gave a very lovely.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
Now, now, can I?
To clarify what you just said, yeah.
On the loop, okay.
I, I, that was another Twilight Zone moment for me because I'm not clear on how I, as a board member, would have any idea what information you're receiving or not receiving. I get that, that, you know, you didn't get incident reports and I understand that that was a system glitch. I understand that that was.
Do you get them?
I understand that that was a system glitch. I understand that you're getting them now, but that wasn't like, okay, staff at Lee County, let's target Bessie Vaughn and keep her off the, it was a mistake and it's been rectified. So I, what I'm unclear of, what information am I receiving, other than incident reports since the first time on the board? What information am I receiving that you're not?
How would I know, Chris, because of sunshine?
So how do you know it's a problem? How do you know it's happening?
Well, it was a problem to me because it was just mentioned to me that there is such a thing. And it took me asking three different people to figure, to get it given to me. And I'm not going to beat a horse, dead horse, and go through. I have lots of examples that I, that I could tell you about. But I have something even more important to talk about as well.
Okay, I'm not, I'm still in the dark on this closing the information loop thing. This has come up several times in the past week. Could you please give me another example?
I could give you an example of the teacher of the raises for the executive and the chief.
Okay, so how do you know I got information you didn't?
Well, I'm assuming you did. I was, we were told that everybody got that information.
And so I'm just going to.
And you.
Yeah, and I'm just going to interrupt because we're way over. I mean, I'm going to interrupt because we were over and I think we wanted to get, you know, we wanted to get our cards on the table. And my main goal was to get us to a point where we could agree that we can work these things out. You know, that we, and that we can become a team, and it's going to take us a little bit of time.
I have a bigger card, though.
Yes, I understand that, so I don't know because we're over, if.
I, I don't know, we can take a consensus, but I feel at this point, it's critical not to stop right now.
But to work out some of these other issues that may take a longer time and may.
Well, if I may, to be honest with you, I would like to at least hear this because it has been extremely difficult on myself and staff since this all came about. So if we have cards that are still there, I've. So if we have cards that are still there, I, and I don't, and I can also think I can speak for staff, do not want to go through the stress.
I'm waiting.
And, and that we have been under.
Excuse me.
For the past couple of weeks.
Right. Go ahead, Betsy.
Okay. I started to say Kathleen gave a very nice speech on her goals for the board, and yet, not very many days ago, on her personal email to people, as I understand it, because I had a phone call from one of them who's on an advisory board, contacted everybody that she could think of, saying things, putting it out there, the board is fracturing. And then she said, and this is what the media storm came about, I had several phone calls from media, saying that she believed, assumption, that it'll be unlikely to call for a vote to terminate the superintendent, however, she felt that there was going to be, they're going to express lack of confidence, wanting, and wanting a leadership change. She accused people on the board of, quote, "Other board members have been, quote, 'sharpening their elbows, sensing an opportunity to gain their own agendas.'" That is pretty strong language, and I'm not sure who you're referring to. It narrows it down to six people since you were writing this, but I take offense to that. There's an understanding among some leader, leaders, it's, it's members, rather, it's talking about that there are people that are discussing already who's going to take the place of the superintendent. There's the, the must, we must, we must do this, we must do that, putting yourself in the position of the guru of this. Need I remind you, we are all elected officials. Every single one of us has the same amount of input. The chair and the vice chair have special positions. But this was sent out on a private email to as many school-associated people as you could think of, saying, this is not to be shared. Well, duh, it's going to be shared immediately when you see that. And as I said, I had a call hours later from a member of the advisory council to talk to me about this. I sent you my reply on your personal email responding to what I felt because I was incensed, I was insulted, and I laid my cards out personally since you did it on the personal email. And what did you decide to do to share it? Which is fine, I have no embarrassment on you sharing it with the board, but what did it, what happened because of that? It precipitated media, I mean, I had two phone, phone calls going from my private email or my private phone and my school phone from all these people. Well, what do you think? And I have told people, I had somebody calling me an idiot, that's fine, emailing me, what do you mean, you're going to fire the? I said, I don't know where you're getting your information. That's what it did, Kathleen. It started a firestorm, and I personally was insulted since I'm one of the six, and I don't know who you were directing it to, but I guarantee I have not been sharpening my elbows.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, with that said, I mean, I was hopeful that, that the email that you sent out is totally contradictory to what you just said in this, in here, and that's the disappointment that I have.
And I can understand that, but I will tell you that what I was hearing, and we all are talking here about what we're hearing, we're listening to teachers, we're listening to staff, we're listening to people in the community, I listened too, and what I heard is what I relayed to people that I believe supported, understood the work of the district, understood the work of the superintendent, and, and would support him because it was clear from what I was hearing that there was, that, that, well, let me put it this way. Staff has been told that a majority of the board was prepared to act on the superintendent. Now, what am I supposed to do with that information?
What you're, excuse me, but what you're supposed to do is follow protocol and wait until the seventeenth and sit down at the, at the meeting, discuss your feelings and what you've heard, just like the rest of us.
And how about letting me finish?
Have, have discussed.
Okay.
And I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Yeah, okay. So the point is that I was not going to walk into this workshop with a bunch of people out there knowing that there was an agenda of some people on this board to make, to, to say and let, make allegations against the superintendent. I wanted to be certain that the people who appreciate and understand what he has done also had the opportunity to hear what was going to be said to the superintendent so that they would be aware of what the issues are that are percolating under the surface.
And you're assuming that we do not appreciate anything that he has done.
No.
You're assuming that we are not saying that he's done any good things and that we were coming in here. Let me just tell you, I don't know about the other six. When I walk into a meeting, as I have done for many years when I worked in corporate, I do not have my mind made up, I don't have an envelope in my purse that says at the right time, I will open it and tell you my decision. My decision is made on what you say, you say, what he says, what everyone says, and then I will make a decision. It is very disheartening to, to assume that I have made up my mind on any issue whatsoever.
I didn't say you had. All I said was that.
The majority, please define majority.
The four people required to remove the superintendent from, from the district.
Okay. Yes. Can we reach consensus that we are the poster child for team-building exercises?
Yeah, let's.
Yes.
Let's have a vote.
We need to build some team here, man.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry.
Be one of those pictures we put up in the boardroom.
And, and I think we were.
After we come together.
I thought we were headed in that direction, to build.
We are, we are. This is part of it. You got to go like.
No, I do believe that it just got so blown out of proportion.
Agreed.
Because as I've said numerous times, we're all adults, we're professional women. This just, it should not have gotten to this point, is how I look at it. We should be able to sit here and speak on our feelings and what we think.
Right.
Or what we like or what we don't like. We all have, you know, I'm not sure what you get or what she gets, I don't really care. I'm just, I'm hoping that we're all getting the same information. I know that if I need information, I go and I find it, and I've not had any issues. And I know for a fact that, and I know this is not even about Dr. Atkins, but when I personally have had people call me or send me a note and I have shared it with Dr. Atkins, immediately it has been taken care of, and I appreciate that. And that's all I have to say, but we do need to work together.
Well, and I honestly, I thought we were working towards that. The, the issue of that email has taken me back several steps in trust, and it will take time. I mean, we were on that route, we were, you know, doing what I thought we were supposed to be doing, and I think everyone but Kathleen has felt that way. I don't know why, but in order for us to move forward, we have got to understand that we're all not going to agree. The, one of the things I kept hearing about the previous boards and the fact that we were newbies and the fact that we were new and the previous boards have always gotten along, that's not the purpose of a board. The purpose of a board is that you have seven people from seven different areas of this community with sometimes seven different ideas, that we sit down at a table and we converse and discuss them as adults and come up to a conclusion.
Which is why I asked for the workshop on Tuesday. That will be an opportunity for us to work through some of the conversation in the community that, you know, we've been asked to respond to. So that's why, that's why you have workshops.
And you couldn't have waited until Tuesday.
Well, again, okay, so.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
So I'm just going to say, we're going to, we're going to keep the focus on the future.
Yes.
And we're going to leave our own personal agendas aside. I mean, are we agreeable to that?
Well, I just want to say to that, this is not a personal agenda.
And then we're going to come together as a team with everyone, everyone being respected and treated equally. No more putting down people at the board table, no more saying things behind others' back. We're going to come to the table and have the conversation. I mean, I just think it's critical because the point that we got to this, these past few weeks, or actually a couple of months, it was not necessary. It was not necessary, and it was built on preconceived notions, people's own personal agenda. Some people, you know, I think, really, really need what they perceive as their power. Guys, it's not there unless we are a team. And so I, I really think, I think that we need to come up with a short list of issues that need to be fixed. We need to continue to build on the wins and successes that we've experienced before. And so the more recently elected board members will come on and try to learn what it is, ask for information, and there, we can do information sharing with the help of our board attorney. And then we need to ask some specific questions about, like, you know, what, what is our goal? How are we going to continue to implement the strategic plan? How are we going to inform decisions? And, and to get whatever is going on in the ranks of the staff ironed out and have people feel appreciated, valued, and allowed to, to show their professional skill sets and contribute to this district like they are competent to do. So I think if we can do that, have a growth mindset, and look at all the issues that are primary when we meet again, I think that will help us, and it'll be another step in the right direction. But we all have to be open-minded about it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just want to say that I respect greatly, I trust the superintendent. We may be struggling because some of us don't like one another, but we have to get to a point where we, as a governance team, not only respect and trust one another, but we need to convey to the public the enormous respect that we have for the superintendent, the accomplishments of the superintendent and his staff. And I think we have to trust going forward, particularly having heard the detailed explanation on procurement this, this afternoon, the depth of experience.
Professionalism.
The professionalism of, of our staff. So that's my closing comment.
The last thing I want to say is, you know, this, this team is not the Miami Dolphins. This team is in August in Foxborough. Like, that's, seriously, seriously.
She needs training camp.
Seriously. But no, but I'm, but I'm telling you, that's the potential here.
Yeah.
That is the potential, but if Tom Brady tries to intercept passes, it's going to lose, it's going to fail. And they team-build. Every single day, they're team-building. Every single day, they're identifying what their job is, and they all focus on their job. I'm not trying to do your job, and you're not trying to do my job, and, and vice versa. Betsy, you have incredible strengths. Please give me an opportunity to find out what they are so I can lean on them because I guarantee you those strengths will fill in for my significant weaknesses. And that's what all seven of us need to do. So could we end by finding consensus with regard to a team-building retreat of sorts? And I can't even believe these words are coming out of my mouth.
I know it. I'm, I'm very surprised.
Look at Dr. Atkins. Dr. Atkins, could you work with Dr. Carlin to determine the best route for that? I, I was not completely in love with the FSBA training, however, I am more than willing to go, and Mary, I'll smile more, more this time than I did two years ago.
I just want to.
Can I put in a comment about a retreat? If anybody proposes having teams building towers with marshmallows and spaghetti, leave me out. I am not making, or falling backward into your. No.
Betsy, we promise.
I am not falling backward.
We promise.
And I am not building towers with raw spaghetti and marshmallows, which I have done at a school. Just sad.
Mary, you have.
Ask Dr. Pruitt my feelings about those type of.
What?
I think, I think we all know them.
You know what chicken is, right?
Mary, yes.
So, so not forgetting that we still have some things that we need to listen, we can do that at the next, uh, workshop. But as far as that, I don't want Mrs. Vaughn to worry because my, my daughter has a house on a lake, and she's got one of these great big rafts, so we're going to put the raft out in the lake, and all seven of us are going to get on to it.
You are not getting me on a raft in the middle of the water.
And if we can do that, we can do anything.
Okay? No. Okay. Go ahead, one second. We have a couple comments we'll plug.
I would be remiss if I didn't reiterate something that I told all of you, that the perils of emailing each other, you can only communicate in a public meeting about board business or things that are going to come to the board for a vote. So I just want to, and I'm not saying any of you did that, I'm just saying I would be remiss if I didn't remind you, please email.
That, that is. Right, that is our thing. Did you, did anyone have, anyone else have a comment, and I'll go last?
Thank you.
I don't know that we've heard from, have we heard from you?
We haven't heard.
Only just about the, the letter. I'm here to support the board, so, and the team.
Okay.
And I just, one thing real quick, if you don't mind. I have listened to some of the concerns that some of the board members have raised and have taken it to heart, and there's some things that, that I'm working on and I'm going to be working with my team on. Communication, we heard loud and clear. I think the executive pay, you know, was certainly, we learned a lot there, and that could have been implemented much, much better. And from that, I learned I need to trust my instincts instead of necessarily going forward with a plan if I have concerns about how we're rolling it out. But communication is something that I think we have to have a discussion on as a team in terms of how we communicate better. Yesterday, we, there were a number of us working real hard to try to provide information to board members. It was the whole day. I think it was important to do that, but if that's the expectation, then we'll have to restructure to be able to meet that expectation. I've heard a lot about positive culture, and I will tell you that, you know, now that we're on the other side of a referendum, that gives me an opportunity to really make that a focus. I have a number of thoughts and things that we've already implemented that I'll share, but other, some other things that we're thinking about putting into works that I think are important. This is feedback that we've not only got from board members, but also from, from teachers, from administrators, and I think will make a huge difference moving forward in terms of improving that. The last, I, I hear a lot about a culture of transparency and a culture where there's some agility in being able to respond. And I think that's something that we should work on in terms of what does this board want in terms of transparency? What does that look like? Instead of, oh, here's an example, we're not being transparent and zinging us about it, let's agree on what a transparent culture looks like, because that's what we've endeavored to do. However, we're not meeting the expectations of some, and I think if we, you know, really strategically click, you know, put forward a path to get to that culture, I think that will make a huge difference. If it's a priority of this board, I think we can make it happen together as a team.
Great.
Anyone else have anything else?
I would like to lead the charge on transparency.
One of the, the things that I meant to mention before, too, and we talked about staff being, feeling uneasy and all the things that are going around, and unfortunately, there was staff that was, that, that were kind of picking at the scab as well and, and assuming this one is going to take over or I'm going to take over. So just going on record and saying staff needs to be aware of their comments and what they say and how they say them, just as much as everyone else. They don't have sunshine, they can go in the restroom and talk, we can't, but just to be aware of that. None of us sitting at this table have any desire, and I, I will go out on a limb to speak for all of us, to hurt the children of this district, to hurt any of the people that are working in this district that work very, very hard. working in this district that work very, very hard, that is not the goal. Fear is not the goal, although there are things that I hear that there are staff that are fearful, in the building and out of the building, in the schools. They are fearful of, and part of it is coming down from the state because of the VAM scores and that type of thing, and you have all of those issues going on. And if they are dealing with all of that, and differentiation, and dealing with wondering if they, if their administrator likes them, there's a lot of things that we need to get into. We need to stop making assumptions, and we're adults, so we ask questions instead of making assumptions. Our goal is the same today, tomorrow, yesterday, and that is to do what's best for children. One of the reasons that I talked about having pictures up in the boardroom when we're having the board meetings is a reminder, to remind us, before you make that statement, before you make that assumption, is it going to help a child? And I think that's what we're all here for. Any good-of-the-order items?
Yes. Yay, something substantive. We're working toward creating a social media campaign where school boards stand together with a, like a placard that has a phrase on it, something along the lines of hashtag Florida Students First, or something like that. Is that something I can reach consensus, you guys would be willing to engage in? The point is for it to start with school boards, hopefully it spreads to schools, the union, and then when we're meeting with delegation members, we hold that sign with members of our delegation, our state senators, our, whatever, it will spread from there. The other thing is, the advocacy subcommittee has a calendar of events coming up. In two weeks, we will be celebrating school counselors, and with your permission, I'd like to ask Dr. Atkins, if you guys are all on board, all we need to do, all I would need to do is take cellphone video of talking to Lori Brooks, or some other counselor that you would recommend about what it is she does, maybe some successes she's had, just advocacy. What do schools do that works? So if, with your permission, if I could do that, when it makes sense on the calendar for areas of highlight for Lee County, so we can be part of this state initiative. Is that cool?
Any other good-of-the-order? Okay. Everyone, please, and in the community, and spread the word around, we are process-driven, we are policy-driven, we have things that, we have things that are done in order, and that is the way that things will be occurring with this board ongoing, as far as I know. So if there's no other comments, thank you to everyone that came, and spread the word that we're filled with love over here.
How are you doing?